Order the City of Elgin Planning and Zoning Commission. Look to staff to please call the roll.
Commissioner Abouali.
Present.
Commissioner Echeverria.
Present.
Commissioner Jones.
Here.
Commissioner Valdez.
Present.
And Chairman Cox.
Present.
We have it all.
Great. Next item on the agenda is the approval of the meeting minutes from the June 2nd, 2025 session. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, chair will entertain a motion for those minutes.
I move to approve the minutes.
I second.
It's Commissioner Jones and Commissioner Abouali. Staff, please call the roll.
Commissioner Jones.
Yes.
Commissioner Abouali.
Yes.
Commissioner Echeverria.
Yes.
Commissioner Valdez.
Yes.
And Chairman Cox.
Yes.
The minutes are approved, five to zero.
Great. All right, next item on the agenda is my opportunity to welcome all of you here tonight. Appreciate having nearly a third of the council chambers filled, so getting good community engagement is a wonderful thing. So I'm very glad to see all of you here. That welcome also goes to my fellow commissioners, many of whom were here until after 1:00 a.m. last month. It's the city staff that stuck that out with us, the AV crew in the back. We appreciate your diligence in that. Even tonight, our board packet is what I would consider, in my opinion, a reasonable size, and it's still 316 pages. We just received about another half inch of pages. I don't know what this equates to, but a fair amount of time goes in, and I do appreciate the effort that the commission puts into preparing for this, considering we're volunteers, we don't get paid, you know, we do this because we love it ever so much, and it really does help the city. So again, thank you to all of you. So since we do see a fair number of faces that I haven't seen before, a few that are, I believe, have been in front of us before, I want to briefly go through the how-to for this evening. For each of the four petitions we have in front of us, we will look to city staff for opening comments and to review the city staff report and go through their findings and their recommendations for each of these petitions. There's usually a high level in their presentation, but in case we have questions, we as a commission will ask the staff member who presents the city packet any questions we might have. Following that, we invite petitioner team to come on up to the lectern over here and tell us your thoughts, add to or highlight anything that you'd like for us to consider as part of your petition. And then, because you're here as a petitioner, we have the right and always love to ask questions of the petitioner team. Following that, we open these petitions up to public comment, and there are a couple different signup sheets over there, whether you're interested party or other party, has to do with distance and a few legalities, but those signup sheets are over there. So if you've signed up on there, we'll typically go through those signup sheets. You can tell us your thoughts. If you're on the right list, we can ask questions. We'll take notes of any questions you might have with the petitioner. And if you didn't sign up on there, don't stress either. We'll go through the room afterward just to make sure everyone who wants to has had a chance to talk before we close the public hearing portion. But tonight, we both open and close the public hearing portion for each of these petitions. If you have something to say that you want to get on record, please come on up. It's really important that you do that, because the commission is a recommending body to city council. So they read the transcripts, they watch the videos, or at least in one case, there's a city council person who joins us quite regularly and hears this in person, so they can get the temperature of the room as well. So it's very important to hear your thoughts. So with that, we will move forward with the agenda. Anyone who's going to be presenting tonight, whether you're on the petitioner team or here for public comment, now is your opportunity to be sworn in by the court reporter. So if everyone can, who's going to be doing that? Any of you, if you think you might, I'd still recommend that you go ahead and do it. So Ben, again, please stand and face the court reporter.
Do you raise your hands, please? Do solemnly swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? Thank you.
Thank you. It's good to see so many of you doing that and taking part of this process. We appreciate that. While we've got the PowerPoint being loaded, the first petition that we're going to consider actually has two petition numbers, and I'm sure we'll hear why that's the case, other than, I guess it's a planned development, it's a map amendment, and a conditional use. But look to staff to please take it away.
That is it. Thank you, Chairman Cox, and good evening, everyone. So, and for the record, we do have proof of proper notice on this one.
Thank you, sir.
So the first petition before you is the application by Northern Builders Incorporated as applicant, and Fox River West Venture LLC and Fox River West 3 LLC as property owners, who are requesting approval of a map amendment to P O R I, Planned Office Research Industrial District Ordinance Number G 6409, with various departures from the Elgin Municipal Code requirements, and a conditional use for a trucking service, a motor vehicle repair shop, and commercial operations yard, all to construct a new approximately 105,170 square foot light industrial building with 250 parking spaces for passenger vehicles and 336 parking spaces for semi trucks and trailers, for a trucking service company with truck repair shop for company vehicles, all of the property commonly known as 2563 to 2565 Mason Road. Okay, we will start, as usual, with a site location map. The subject property outlined in yellow, it's a 20.4 acre property that is located on the south side of Mason Road, just west of the intersection of Randall and I-90. The property is currently vacant, and it has never been developed. It is zoned P O R I, Planned Office Research Industrial District, that was established in 2009. As you can see, all surrounding properties have the general purple shade over them. That means they all have the same zoning classification, either O R I, Office Research Industrial, or P O R I, Planned Office Research Industrial. To the north is the property that's currently under construction for a new trucking facility that went through the approval process just recently. To the south is the large office building that was most recently occupied by Chase Corporate Offices, Chase Bank. To the east are several properties, including Candlewood Suites Hotel and Avondale Estates' Senior Living Facility, and then to the west, the large building there is the York Container Manufacturing Company. They manufacture corrugated boxes. So the applicant is requesting approval to construct a new, approximately 105,000 square foot building with accessory parking for cars and trucks for E and O Solutions, a trucking company that's currently located in the city on Tollgate Road, and this would be their new headquarters, so they would be moving from 745 Tollgate to this new facility. The application includes, in addition to the amendment to the planned development, request for conditional use, there are a couple aspects of the application, including the motor vehicle repair shop for trucks within the building, and also the trucking services land use that is currently not allowed in the P O R I, so those will be added to that P O R I ordinance, and then the applicant is requesting conditional use for those as well. Here is the proposed layout for the new building. Building is situated appropriately along Mason Road, with car parking on both east and west sides of the building. There's a total of 250 parking spaces on site for passenger vehicles. The truck and trailer parking lot is situated south of the building, with 336 stalls for trucks and trailers. That's what's called a commercial operations yard for parking and storage of trucks. Building includes approximately 21,000 square feet of office space. That's the easternmost portion of the building. See if this works. So right here is the office wing, that, like I said, has 21,000 square feet of office space on two levels, and then a approximately 4,200 square foot penthouse on the third floor. And then the remainder of the building is approximately 80,000 square feet that is devoted to the maintenance shop and a small warehouse. They are proposing to have 21 driving docks for truck repair vehicles, and then there's four loading docks on the south side. All garage doors and drive-in doors face south away from Mason Road. The commercial operations yard south of the building for storage and parking of trucks is enclosed by an eight-foot-high solid privacy fence that's indicated here in red. Normally, the code requires a six-foot-high solid fence. They're proposing an eight-foot-high privacy fence for additional screening of the trucks and trailers. In addition, there would be extensive landscaping on the perimeter of the fence, as well as in the front yard in front of the building along Mason Road. There's a total of 224 shade and evergreen trees proposed on the site. The, I mentioned, the building has a unique design, the office wing that has the penthouse on the third floor, which is quite unusual. It also has a sort of an unusual architecture for a light industrial building. It's very well designed. The office wing includes the two-story glass for the offices, and then, like I said, the penthouse on top, the sort of, the roof of that penetrates across. There's also a patio that's kind of seen in this image right here for the top floor penthouse. The proposed building is required to have one parking space per 1,000 square feet of floor area, or one per one and a half employees, whichever is greater. In this case, they're anticipating having about 100 employees. So the parking requirement is going to be based on the size of the building, with approximately 105,000 square feet. The facility is required to have 105 parking spaces, and they are proposing 250, so they satisfy the parking requirement. Staff has analyzed the anticipated traffic projections by this development, and would compare that to a similar light industrial development that could be constructed here on-site, similar to the York Container Building to the west. This proposed land use will generate substantially less than a similar light industrial building. The truck traffic will be distributed throughout the day. They're anticipating approximately 30 to 40 trucks that are, like I said, distributed throughout the day. A similar light industrial building, a manufacturing building, that's approximately 400,000 square feet, similar to the York Container, would generate about 280 cars during the morning peak hour, and then about 2,000 trucks throughout the day. A logistics fulfillment center of the same size, 400,000 square feet, that could be built here, would generate even more, approximately 548 vehicles during the P M P hour, and then over 3,000 trucks throughout the day. The proposed development requires several departures from the design requirements of the zoning ordinance and that P O R I ordinance from 2009. Overall, based on the total impervious area, the vehicle use area, the site is required to have 31,772 square feet of interior landscape yard. As you can see, they're proposing about 4% of the total, that's 25,000, just over 25,000 square feet, so they're just short of that. The 2009 P O R I ordinance requires a 10-foot-wide foundation landscaping along the front of the building. They are proposing a total of a five-foot-wide foundation landscaping, what's called a foundation yard. The fence, as I mentioned, normally the code requires and allows up to a six-foot-high fence within the required setbacks. They're proposing an eight-foot-high to provide additional screening, which is appropriate. And then, the design of the parking lot requires that all stalls for either trucks or cars includes landscape islands at the ends. They have several rows of truck parking that do not include landscape islands. However, the car parking lots of the east and west sides of the building do have all necessary islands. So the application is required to meet the standards for map amendments, planned developments, and for conditional use. Staff has analyzed these standards in the staff report, and we do believe that all applicable standards have been satisfied. With that, staff recommends approval subject to the conditions in the packet, and I will highlight a couple of them. One that suggests that only vehicles associated with E and O can be parked and stored in the commercial operations yard. And then the second one is similar to that, that only trucks affiliated with the company can be repaired on-site. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions. The applicant's team is here as well, they can address the commission.
Sounds good. We'll invite them up in a minute, but we'll start on my right with questions for staff. Commissioner Echeverria.
None.
Commissioner Valdez.
No questions.
Commissioner Jones.
You're specifying that so it can't be a truck repair facility for other trucks.
Third parties, correct. So this is just for their maintenance.
Just for their own fleet, and they have a large, okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Commissioner Abouali.
On a similar note, you mentioned only E and O trucks parked overnight, but if this is a transportation facility, they will have other trucks coming and going. Did we just do that for traffic purposes, or?
No, so essentially, and they can probably answer this later themselves, so the facility will serve their transportation purposes. So they have a fleet of over 400 trucks, I believe. And so generally, what they do is they use this facility for maintenance of their trucks, storage of their trucks, and storage of their trailers. So most of the time, most of the trucks are out on the road, transporting goods from A to B, and any of the goods do not come to the facility. So this is for their fleet of trucks to maintain and store when needed.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, I don't have any questions for you, so thanks for that presentation.
You're welcome.
All right, real quick, before we go to the petitioner team, I probably should have said this before, for everyone here tonight, before you start speaking, whether it's part of the petition, or if you're here for public comment, please state your name, spell it, and give us your address, and then tell us your thoughts. So with that additional instruction, gentlemen, please take it away.
Good evening. My name is Ken Einhaus, Senior President of Preconstruction with Northern Builders.
Mathias Tresna, Vice President of Development and Sales for Northern Builders.
Thank you very much for the opportunity. We're very pleased to be visiting this project tonight. I can tell you, I have estimated probably at least 20 projects on this site over the last 10 years. All buildings were industrial warehouse use, anywhere from 300,000 to 400,000 square feet with, you know, with deliveries coming to and from those warehouses. We're very pleased to have connected with this client. They're very unique in their operation. I mean, it's a young company that's grown tremendously. They started in Rolling Meadows. They have three facilities in Hampshire?
In Huntley.
In Huntley. And they built their headquarters about four years ago on Tollgate. And as their building, as their business has grown, they've expressed their needs to us, and as Demir said earlier, it's their fleet of trucks that they own. They don't use anybody else. And they deliver freight for various companies. Those trucks are out, you know, most of the time overnight, over the road, and they come back here when not in use or when needing repairs. They want to be able to house their fleet here, so it was, they needed that many stalls on it, because when you have, you don't have deliveries, they, you know, they're going to come here. But otherwise, you know, they're planning for the future, they're planning for growth, they don't want to move again. Their last facility was 20,000 square feet, and this one is a little over 105,000 square feet. And we're pleased to be, to be part of the design team on this really unique building. I mean, it is, it's beyond an A standard of a building. If you were to look at the architectural, they wanted these columns holding the building up in the front. They were very, very detailed in their wishes for it, and we brought those graphics to light, met their needs, and we're looking to break ground on this facility. I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have this evening. It is, and as Demir said, it is the lightest use for this facility compared to anything else that would go on this property. As you can see, the development, it's all been pretty much industrial warehouse or industrial manufacturing, so although it may be housing the trucks, they're just housed on-site. Any repairs are inside. Doors are closed. It's a quiet, low-traffic facility that is a great asset to the community.
Sounds good. I'll start on my left this time. Commissioner Abouali, do you have a question for the, this team?
Thank you for coming. I read that you want to have this up by January of 2026. Quite ambitious.
That's what they're pushing us for. They're saying they want that maintenance facility in January. We're going to do our best. We'll try.
Okay, thank you.
Mother Nature always has something to say about it.
Commissioner Jones.
No questions. Thanks for coming tonight.
Thank you.
Commissioner Valdez.
I do have a question. It's the main entrance going to be over by Randall and 90 to your facility?
It's, it's close.
Yeah. It's likely going to be, yeah, it's likely going to be the first right-hand turn you make coming off the highway.
Yeah.
And you don't expect or foresee any issues with that, because right now, during peak hour, I think there is like a five-second light for the people going east and west, and like an hour for north and south on Randall.
Well, I'll tell you, these guys are so excited to stay in Elgin, I think they'll overlook that without a doubt. They're very excited, and it was, they're pretty adamant about not wanting, they were contemplating Huntley for their headquarters facility, but I think we've talked them into staying, and they could not be more excited. So I think the traffic's not too much of a concern, especially because their businesses, they're already in town.
Good, good choice.
They really wanted to stay here. They love Elgin. They wanted to be here. We had to do some pushing and pulling to make it fit, but yeah, there's not a lot of activity on that, on that site. Cars that come to work in the morning, cars that go home in the night.
No more questions.
Thank you.
Commissioner Echeverria.
No questions.
All right, I don't have any questions for you either, so I appreciate you coming on up.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
All right, as promised, for those of you in the audience tonight who came to speak on these two petitions, 16-25 and 17-25, I've exhausted the sign-in sheet, which was just the two names from the petitioner team. Is there anyone else here who wishes to comment on this petition? All right. I think we can do the going once, going twice. All right, we're going to close the public hearing portion then, and look back to staff, who is already gearing up, I can tell, for final comments.
We don't have anything else to add. We believe that the application meets the standards for approval, and staff recommends approval subject to the conditions in the packet.
Great. With that, the chair will entertain a motion then for these two petitions, like again, like I said before, 16-25 and 17-25.
I move to recommend the city council approve petitions 1625 and 1725, subject to the conditions outlined within our packet, and adopt the findings of the commission. Those findings also provided within our packet.
Thank you. Is there a second?
A second.
Staff, please call the roll.
Commissioner Valdez.
Yes.
Commissioner Jones.
Yes.
Commissioner Abouali.
Yes.
Commissioner Echeverria.
Yes.
And Chairman Cox.
Yes.
The motion is approved, five to zero.
All right, as we said before, that's going to be our recommendation to city council. Imagining you've been working with staff already to this point, please continue working with them, and they'll get you the dates of the follow-on city council meetings. Thanks for coming tonight. All right, before we move to the next item on the agenda, I understand Commissioner Echeverria, you're wishing to recuse yourself from the next three petitions?
That is correct.
All right, thank you. With his departure, we still have a quorum. This is a commission of seven, we still have four, so we're good to go to consider the next amendments, which we have the community development director himself for this next petition, 22-25.
Thank you, Chairman. Staff is recommending approval of an amendment to the text of the zoning ordinance. This would create a land use classification for food trucks and trailers, and add that use to the list of conditional uses in the CF, Community Facility Zoning District, the Center CC1, Center City Zoning District, the CC2, Center City Zoning District. The collective term that we're applying for food trucks and trailers is mobile food vendors. Currently, mobile food vendors can locate on certain private property if the owner of that property chooses to use one of their four annual temporary use permits. Temporary uses are typically used for, to allow business activities or events outside. One temporary use permit may be valid for up to 30 days, but the aggregate of all four temporary uses in a calendar year may not exceed 60 days. Other examples of temporary uses that you may be more familiar with include customer appreciation events, fundraisers, carnivals, haunted houses, Christmas tree lots, and several years ago, we used temporary uses to approve COVID testing trailers. Mobile food vendors are also currently allowed on city streets where they're part of a larger city-approved special event, like one of the many hosted in Festival Park. Food trucks can add energy and vibrancy to underutilized parking lots and other places, especially in downtowns. The diversity of the cuisines allow customers to try food and drinks that might not have otherwise been available, promoting cultural awareness and inclusivity. And popular food trucks, through significant social media presences, can bring persons to Elgin that have never previously been, but will hopefully return. At the same time, the efforts to promote food trucks cannot be to the detriment of our city's bricks-and-mortar restaurants and other adjacent land uses. The proposed conditional use process ensures public notice and an evaluation of the location and operational parameters of a mobile food vendor to minimize the likelihood of such negative effects. The proposed allowances would only allow mobile food vendors to operate from private property, not from on-street parking spaces. More so, applications for conditional use could only be submitted by a business within 400 feet of the proposed location of the mobile food vendor, ensuring that a local business is responsible for the scheduling and operations of the mobile food vendor, and provides bathroom facilities for customers and employees. Mobile food vendors under this proposal do not include push carts or bicycle carts. Applicants must include a litter collection plan and describe the way the food trucks and/or trailers would be powered. Mobile food vendors can only provide tables and chairs, where those items have been reviewed and approved as part of the conditional use application. The proposed amendment would allow one A-frame sign per mobile food vendor in compliance with the sign regulations in the zoning ordinance. That generally allows a four-foot-high sign that keeps at least five feet of public sidewalk unobstructed at all times. And the proposed amendment reminds operators of mobile food trucks that they must be licensed, inspected, and maintain compliance with the rules and regulations of the Elgin Health Department and the Elgin Fire Department. The Downtown Neighborhood Association hosted a meeting at their offices on June 24th, to which downtown restaurants and bars were invited to hear about the proposal and ask questions in advance of tonight's public hearing. DNA either directly mailed or delivered in-person invitations to more than 40 establishments. The DNA also publicized the meeting in their Business Buzz newsletter. Representatives of four establishments attended, and no one objected to the amendment. DNA staff also shared the proposal with their Economic Development Committee. Staff reviewed the manner in which several other communities allow food trucks and trailers, and found that those food trucks and trailers in the communities reviewed were simply approved without public consideration, either by annual permit or license. Your staff report has our findings for the cities of Chicago, St. Charles, and the villages of Bolingbrook, Downers Grove, and Schaumburg. Staff contemplated a program that, like Staff contemplated a program that, like many of those communities, simply established a standard setback for, from restaurants, but found that the size of the downtown and the density and coverage of existing restaurants could preclude an opportunity to consider creative circumstances where and/or when a food truck or trailer might be desirable. So hence the value of the conditional use process. Again, staff recommends approval of the amendments and offers for your consideration findings that demonstrate that the amendment advances the purposes and intents of the zoning ordinance and the goals and objectives of the comprehensive plan. I'll be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you for that. Appreciate you highlighting a lot of what was in the city packet. My one comment for those sitting here in the audience tonight, can you briefly describe what CC1, CC2, and CF districts are, please?
Absolutely. So the downtown is primarily composed at its core of CC1, Center City Zoning District, radiating out from that or several blocks of Center City 2 Zoning District. So when people contemplate or think of downtown Elgin, it is usually one of those two zoning districts. CC1, more in the center, CC2 around the edges. CF is traditionally used for city facilities, hospitals, and schools, those type of community facilities.
Including parks and the like.
Yes, including parks.
And CC1 and CC2 differences are parking, what else are their primary?
There's really not many. It's about intensity, allowances of use. You get a little more auto-oriented that can, that can, that's allowed in the CC2 than the CC1, because the CC1 is supposed to be that more urban core. CC2 recognizes that you're along arterials at the edge of the urban core, but that's generally it.
Okay, thank you.
My pleasure, sir.
Just trying to help make sure we're bringing everybody along with us with all these buzzwords that's codified, but not always readily apparent to the populace, so. All right, Commissioner Jones, why don't you start off questions for staff, if you have any?
So there's a really low number of participants of restaurants that participated, four.
Yes, ma'am.
Did we, what, what is the Chamber of Commerce? Maybe with a bit, like the bigger picture of all of Elgin, what, how, what is their way in about the food trucks?
I don't, we did not reach out to the Chamber of Commerce and gauge their impression on it because those users most, most likely to have concerns are downtown. And so we wanted to make sure that expressly those folks were made aware of the proposal and if they wanted to ask any questions, raise any concerns, that we made ourselves available to them. Elgin has a longstanding tradition of land use regulations that I like to call dip your toe in the water. We did it, and what I mean by that is not full-on in, but almost a pilot program. And I would very much put this approach in that category. I would suspect that if, if we found this successful, then it would follow in the paths of several of the other, of those approaches, like we did with LED sign regulations. Very small scope, expand out, increase the number of zoning districts. And if we got to that point where other zoning districts were, were included, other business zoning districts, then I would strongly suspect that we would reach out to the Chamber of Commerce and make sure that they allowed their, their folks who are in the other parts of Elgin to weigh in as well.
Okay, the 400 feet, I understand in the, in the petition for later, but what's driving that? I see the other, and I'm a food truck fan, I buy tamales out of the trunk at Aldi's. I'm all for food trucks. What determined that, rather than some of these other things?
Sure, so 400 feet is, is about the average length of an east-west block. And when we wanted to make sure that, that, that a business applicant in overseeing the food truck operations, and similarly in reverse, making available their public bathrooms, we didn't want them to be on the other side of downtown or halfway across the city. And so we felt that it was reasonable, at least for 400 feet, a block length for a person to walk. And then the Google machine tells us that 400 feet is about a minute walk for a reasonable person. That seemed, at least to us, to be a reasonable recommendation. Certainly, if there was a, a larger or shorter distance that the Planning and Zone Commission felt, we could certainly look at that, too.
Yeah, and that brings me to my next question. So it has to be a business or property owner that applies for a food truck to only be located on private property?
Yes, ma'am.
Are we limiting then, are we restricting the use of food truck operations by, by making that?
Again, this was-
Because who, you know, who would have that private property?
Well, we can at lea, we have at least two applications before us. And I can think of, there is a parking lot that is immediately to the south of the dive bar. That would be, that would be available for this opportunity. There, if the martini room, for example, wanted to approach Elgin National Bank, there is a paved area under their drive-thru that would be a perfect location for this. Trying to think of some-
Are we limiting, though, then, the food trucks' abilities to come here? If they don't have a business to sponsor them, per se, in that format, then are we limiting a food trucks? You know, we'll only get, would that limit it to these five food trucks? Because the private property likes that person or not, you know?
And that very well may could be. But the point is, is that then there's a local business who's overseeing control of those. There are other communities that establish on-street parking areas, where, where it first come, first served, food trucks can locate. But again, in the, in the pilot program type of approach, we wanted to make sure that if, if an application came before Planning and Zone Commission and ultimately City Council, and there was necessary operational parameters that were negotiated, we wanted to have someone in Elgin who was responsible for ensuring that whatever food truck came in, those restaurants, those food establishments, those businesses made those arrangements and overseed and made sure that we had compliance.
I guess I, that kind of, I don't, I don't know. I have mixed feelings on that, because I think we're limiting our audience.
We, and, and I don't, and I don't disagree with you. And certainly if this program is as successful as we hope, we can revisit it in a couple months, six months, a year, and we can certainly expand it.
Does the city have land that they would contemplate having a park like this, in that area? That gravel lot, or, you know, some of the responses were Festival Park. Are there any other, you know, locations being proposed?
I've not had any conversations with other city staff about opening up other locations. Generally, we try not to, we try not to compete with, with, with businesses. The application that you have before your Wing Park is, is a unique animal, it's, it's out on its own. But I, I can't immediately contemplate why we would set up, for example, in the parking lot behind, or just south on Villa, just south of the karate place, there's that parking lot right there. I can't see why the city would-
I don't know where you're at.
Let's see. Just north, just north of the Fulton Street parking garage on, on Villa, there's a city parking lot right there.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I can't, I can't see why the city would say, let's, let's set up a food truck court at that location and take parking off of, out of our inventory and compete with, you know, if, if an adjacent business or someone else wanted to, great. But I don't think that's anything that we would necessarily undertake. But circumstances could change. And, and this would allow us to do that.
Okay. My last question is, in, for all of our applicants that come through the central business area, we don't have any parking restrictions, we don't have, you know, you're not required to have parking. As a business owner in that area, we've not had parking enforcement for over five years. So I think it's hard, so cars park all day. You know, our place was construction for the last two years, but cars are parking all day, every day, without any movement. So while we don't have any parking restrictions, maybe parking enforcement could help roll through some of that, because it is posted times, but there's no, no enforcement.
Got you. Be, be happy to share those concerns with the, with the police department.
But yeah, because that makes it very difficult. Because I believe we do have plenty of parking, but not, it's not moving around, so.
Right, and, and you're exactly right. Parking, the availability of parking is not just a number, it's about turnover. So we'll, we'll share that concern.
Yeah, because it's all the applicants in the downtown, you know, we don't have to require that. So I would appreciate that.
Sure.
I think that's it for right now. Thank you so much, Mark, I appreciate you.
No problem, thank you.
Commissioner Valdez?
My concern was the parking, but she already covered that, so I don't have any questions.
Commissioner Abou Ali?
You did say the DNA spoke with 40 businesses.
Invited 40.
Oh, and only spoke with-
Four came, four came to our meeting.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right. And what's the primary reason, just for my info, that we don't allow push carts or bicycle carts?
So again, it's that, that certainly could be a change to the program in the future. But what we're trying to do with this, at least this initial rollout, was strike a balance between a bricks-and-mortar restaurateur who says, well, look, I may have built this restaurant, I may have outfitted it, I pay property taxes, I, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera, versus a food truck or trailer that drives up, parks, and starts, and starts to vend. Today's food trucks and trailers require a significant investment. That's not necessarily the case for a push cart or a bicycle cart. So it was an attempt to balance those interests. And, and again, that's not to say that that couldn't be something in the future, but at least for this initial rollout, that was our suggestion.
Thank you.
All right, I don't have any questions for you at this time, so. Staff is doing the, the walk to get the sign-in sheet. So we'll give them a moment. All right, I see that no one signed up. However, more than glad to open this petition up to public comment. So if you're here for this particular petition, for the, the city-wide consideration of this tax amendment, that is petition 22-25, now's your opportunity to come on up. And it's always interesting, some people smile, some people actively look away when I offer that, so. All right, sir, are you coming up to speak on this petition?
Yeah, my name is James Harvey, I've signed up.
You did sign up, maybe-
I did sign up.
He's on a different-
Maybe on a different, so this petition is for the, the city-wide tax amendment? Sounds good. This is, sir, just even though we're having a brief conversation, why don't you come on up to the microphone? So this is for the city-wide amendment. We're, we will consider the Wing Street next, followed by the DuPage Street petitions following this. So this is just city-wide at this point. Were you still wanting to make comment on this petition?
Is this a petition for the, for the food truck, for the, no?
It's for the ci, it's for the city, city-wide tax, okay.
Mr. Harvey, did you want to speak about the, a specific application, the food truck court at 215 DuPage? Okay, that, that will be called momentarily. Okay.
Appreciate that, sorry about the confusion. All right, everyone else is clear, this is city-wide, right? But petition, or public, public comments open, so anyone? Miss, all right, sir, yeah, we do have Greg Burna, I believe that's you. All right, and you did sign up for this petition, I see, so. Again, when we consider this, we'll be looking at just the city-wide zoning ordinance tax amendment at this point.
Correct. My name is Greg Burna. Go to the top slide, please. G R E G B E R N A. Thank you for your time and for letting me provide some additional facts and public input on the proposed tax amendment regarding mobile food vending becoming a conditional use. I have a master's degree in architecture, I have worked in the city for 30 years as an architect. I have done many historic facade improvement programs in the CC1 district. And I've- And I also work for the city, working with them in the city, making sure that they meet the code and building code and ADA requirements for improving project, remodeling projects, all sorts of projects. I've worked on almost every building in, in the city. I'm also a owner and a, and a, a CEO of a trailer company. Just a minute, I'm going to use some water. Thank you. So I'm also an owner of a truck, a trailer company that designs, has three patents for trailer design. And I've got U.S. and international patents for them. So I am very versed in architecture and an expert in trailers and can talk to this tax amendment as an expert. I did talk to local restaurant owners, bankers, the International Bank, community facilities, the YW, art space lots, and realtors in the area. And they were all very concerned about making this program permanent for mobile food vending. The reason that one of the concerns is making this mobile is it is an easy entrance. But the city staff has not provided any standards or laws or acts that are in place to, as resources, to govern these once they're in place. They do have the health department, which will make sure that it's following the, the health of kitchen requirements. And they do have the fire department, making sure there's fire extinguishers. But there's no standards or rules to how they are to actually operate. It does say in the, in the amendment that there is restrictions for impacting design, construction, and operation of these conditional uses, which is, I'm sure, boilerplate verbiage. But in this case, we're talking about vehicles and not, not buildings. So the building department is really not involved. And the city really can't control or comment or inspect the design and construction of a trailer and the conditions that make it unsafe, as well as the operation. Mobile food vending is deemed necessary because they are a commercial truck and trailer and not under the building department, like all other uses. The zoning should not overlay a conditional use on top of existing use and allowing commercial vehicle parking in lots. We design trailers that the roofs do not have to have slopes because they're moving down the road and vehicles need to move to prevent long-term damage. You just don't want a vehicle sitting for long periods of time. The wheels dry, dry out, they get rust out from the bottom because of condensation from the ground. Rodents can get into them. And it's just, water intrusion, rust, and vandalism is very, very easy when it's sitting out in a lot. They're not in commercial operational yards as every, every other type of trailer of this size. The other thing is they're working outside, they're repairing them or upkeeping them outside, where people in their own, own businesses, a mechanical business, they cannot work outside. The trucking company doesn't repair their trucks outside in the parking lots. And yet, these people are going to have a, a permanent use to do this in their associated parking stalls. Next slide, please. So as you can see, this is the zoning map of Elgin. And the dark red is the CC1 and the CC2. And then a lot of the green with the CF, that's the CF district throughout the area. What we're asking is, what is the hardship that requires this taxing of- What we're asking is, what is the hardship that requires this taxing amendment for the food truck vendors that can set up in all city streets and zoning classifications with a temporary food establishment permit that has already been successfully used for many years? So we already have a pilot. We already have a program in place. It's been in place for many years. We don't need to, we need to look and see how successful that is before we start to make this a permanent use. What is the data on this? Why is the city staff recommending approval of the food trucks currently more opportunity in different zones than the brick and mortar restaurants with all the special events? Eating food, eating food, brick and mortar is not used in CF, but mobile food vending will be. This tax amendment makes temporary use permits permanent year-round. This amendment would create a new use in the city of Elgin housed in a motor vehicle or trailer. So we're not talking about a building or a structure that most zoning requirements are pertaining to for a conditional use. It's a permanent structure. It's governed by the building department, and this is not. It also creates a loophole that the building department and code and ADA do not govern. Auto mechanics and the other businesses cannot work in the parking lots. I mentioned that already. Do not recommend to the city the tax amendment that goes against several other zoning requirements, such as the size of the park. They have to fit in the size of, these are passenger vehicle parking lots in downtown Elgin. CC one, CC two, and these are commercial vehicles that aren't fit in those standard sizes. They also may not meet the weight requirements and the size requirements. And it is not, it's not allowed for any other business to do, to park their own vehicles in their own lots that are without a commercial operational yard. Do not recommend the city tax amendment that goes against several of these rules, but also the parking, onsite vehicle circulation, the setbacks, the size, the weight, the congestion, the noise, and the light pollution. They're sitting a lot, but when they are in use, they have lights on them, they have a generator running all the time from the time they start operation to the time they get done cleaning up and putting it away. Health issues with the rodents and storage, how long is the food sitting in these trailers? Drawing things that we don't want drawn towards them. This is a temporary use. We want these trucks to come and go. We want them, they are vehicles, and they need to change. You want to have different varieties, different foods, and they can do all of this through the special permit or the temporary permit that already exists. So we're allowing a commercial vehicle to park in downtown Elgin and be stored there permanently around the year. That is not available to any other businesses and is dramatically affecting the restaurants. Yes, it is less to have a bicycle than it is to have a trailer, but a trailer is far less expensive than building a restaurant or remodeling a space to be a restaurant with all the ventilation codes, all the energy codes, and all the other requirements for a restaurant in downtown Elgin and any other zoning district. Next slide, please. So what we have here is, we have every spot that's available in CC one and CC two. There's over ninety locations.
Mr. Burna, just so everything you say is on microphone, you can just hand these out, please, and then you can give us your thoughts over there. Thank you. You're good. I just want to make sure everything can be heard here and at home.
Right. So I have handed out the slideshow to all the council members and so this list on the back shows that every business lot, parking lot, open lot, private lot, undeveloped lot, church and community lot that's also in CF, that could work as a permanent mobile food vendor location. This will easily outnumber the brick and mortar restaurants. This list of over ninety makes every business owner at any use into an eating place use, which will dramatically impact the brick and mortar restaurants and outnumber them because of the low entry costs. No property taxes, as Mark had mentioned, no mortgage costs, and no following of the building codes and requirements used because they're using vehicles. There is also no maintenance that they have to upkeep. There's a lot less inspections and fire alarms and sprinkler systems and constant other, just a myriad of other things that we have to put in every building. The city staff has not shown how the coordination of the existing temporary food establishment, the seasonal food establishment, which is for people handling the food and applications, temporary use, and the food establishment application process and issuing with the permits. So they haven't shown us how that they're going to coordinate these two functions. You've got food trucks that are under special, the temporary use, temporary food establishment, and then you have these coming in that'll have the use, and why do we need both? We have a lot more food trucks that we've used than probably most cities, and I'll get to that in a little bit. But we really need to get to understand that this small change, this pilot program, is making a dramatic effect on the brick and mortar because we have vacancies downtown that we can hopefully try and lure restaurants into and not fill them up with trailers. These downtown, and then so if you look at this map, and I'm open to any questions if you may have any. You can see right here. I'm using my pointer here to show thirty-one. These are all along our major arteries coming in. So if there's trailers parked there.
Mr. Burna, again, I'm sorry. You've got to be at the microphone when you're speaking so we can get you on record, so.
Okay. So along Route thirty-one and Villa, Dundee Avenue, National Street, these are our main arteries that the zoning usually likes to be, have more control of because it's our gateway in and they have a little bit more stringent requirements. And these are all the locations where you could actually have a parking lot full of trailers. They mentioned all the, that one of the reasons to have these in CC one is because of the foot traffic. Well, most of the foot traffic is going to the restaurants, so you're going to be taking away from the, you're literally taking them right off the street to go to these parking structures. I know for a fact a lot of people walk down Dupage to the, you know, existing restaurants and at lunchtime and things like that. And they've invested in downtown. They've put up with a lot of construction. They've put up with a lot of inconveniences over the years. The COVID and everything else, it has nothing to do with the city, but it's just been a tough time. They have been trying to get more restaurants downtown for decades. Next slide, please. So this here, I brought a copy of it as well, is the city master plan. It was developed in two thousand. They worked on it for years before it was finalized. I have copies that date back four years for them to work on it, and there is a plan, and we're working on it, and it's successful. The city of Elgin has plans and is working very hard to follow up on it and a great expense. And the city planning takes decades to have, to come to fruition. It takes this long to have it happen. That's just part of planning, just part of zoning, part of making the city better. And this is not part of the plan. Completing the Riverfront Promenade, the Festival Park, the New Dupage Court, the Nightmare on Chicago Street, and the sidewalk pavement improvements, all that is part of it. This plan is working. There are more opportunities to live downtown than ever before. The Riverfront designs with, the Riverfront is designed with expedition, with vendors and exhibitors in mind, as well as Festival Park. And it's a permanent use for the vendors. There's music acts and temporary band shells spaces and power for these vendors. It's intentionally there for the food trucks and for the mobile food vendors. The River Promenade and Festival Park, someone had, you know, a lot of money was invested in those, and there is quite a lot of activity in those, and they're to bring the people to the Riverfront. That was the plan. That is the goal. It is not, this does not meet the goals of the master plan that is what we've gotten to today. I'm very excited with all the development that is downtown Elgin. It's really come about. They've got a five-story building that's about to open with retail space underneath. And there's opportunities here for people to open up brick and mortar restaurants. There's eight available spaces for lease and another eight available spaces for purchase in the downtown area. So let's not give up on this plan. Let's not deter from something that's just exciting and happening now in other cities. It's happening in other cities because they don't have a River Promenade as nice as the one we have, or a Festival Park. In quoting a gentleman that had been in your seats for over thirty years, Robert Stillstrom, Still-Jetson, I'm not sure I'm pronouncing his name right.
Still-Jestrom.
Thank you. Thank you. Sorry about that. But he's been on your board for thirty-plus years and on the planning commission. One, and his quote was, "One always must have a long-term perspective," he said, "to see what is most appropriate for all the people of Elgin for the long term rather than good for today, tomorrow, and next week." I think that's pretty well put. Next slide, please. So it's not just from two thousand that we're following. It's also the strategic objectives currently of two thousand twenty-four. The Riverfront and the city center has a spot for great mobile food vending and is part of the master plan and is built with electricity for the vendors at Festival Park and Riverfront Promenade and are noted in the two thousand twenty-four strategic plan. Promoting the vendors and exhibitors is in mind. It provides additional elements with such artful canopies and colorful lighting along the Riverfront for the opening and permanent use of the city to enjoy. This is also the case for Festival Park, designed with power and venting and musical acts and bandstand area that can be set up, which we know from the past. And the city is trying to have, I've got it circled there, you know, to be sustainable and to encourage these activities in downtown. So the goals of these plans was to bring people to the Riverfront and downtown together, not as individual spots around vacant lots that are a possibility. And so the city is not only building structures for the vendors that will compete, like Mark said, they try not to compete with the restaurants, but they actually are with all these special uses. And the other side of it is, is they are doing special events. There's a whole list of them. So let's go to the next slide, please. This is the two thousand eighteen comprehensive plan. Also states that the downtown should include reinvigorating the Riverfront and the cultural offerings. It will function as a shared community meeting place that unites all parts of Elgin and a success to bring people to Elgin and build on that future. This is one of the reasons that the Prairie Street parking deck was built and is to support the Riverfront Promenade and Festival Park. In these comprehensive city plans, the emphasis was to show natural features of the city's Riverfront and not small individual gathering spaces. This makes a temporary use into a permanent use, which is not controlled by the city on what the vendors' menus are or proper design. Chicago has developed a Riverfront Promenade as well with lighting and shows, with lighting that they flash up on the buildings. It's really, really cool. Well, and they've done that, and they have food trucks that can only be on the streets and only for a certain amount of time. So we really should stick to the plan, and it is not, this is not part of a, part of the goal of the comprehensive plan. This is the comprehensive plan. Other towns do not have this, what we have, and they're using the permit system. So why are we using the change, changing the use and making a conditional use when the permit, all the other ones that are listed in your background are just using permits and licensing to control these food trucks, and they are all temporary? They are not saying, okay, you can stay here all year long and store your vehicle in the winter or store it when it's not used. We don't want these trailers sitting around when they're not used. And they're not used all night and on weekends or with businesses. You don't have any control when it's on private property of when it's used. So you lose your control when it goes from public spaces to private, and you also lose your ability to inspect and change out things, things like that. And because it doesn't say in there that the owner has to fill out an application, it says the business can do the application. So a tenant can actually set this up to change the use in Elgin without even the owner knowing. Next slide, please. So this is the list of this summer's activities. There's over thirty events supported by the city to, for this summer, which is approximately two events a week. And a lot of them are, have vendors that are, you know, invited to these special uses. In the application for the next amendment, all the cities are using permits and licensing, as I had mentioned, and the vending is not adding a new conditional use to the zoning. The city has addressed the needs for a permanent new use, and the temporary permitted is working. This committee should not recommend to the city council that this tax amendment, if other cities have also felt that mobile food vending is a temporary use and not a conditional use that will be typically, that is typically used for buildings or a permanent structure. The large number of events and the success of the Nightmare on Chicago Street shows that the existing permitting and licensing is successful, and tax amendments should be, should not be recommended to the city council approved. Master should not be recommended because it's against the master plan and comprehensive plan. Existing public spaces should not be direct competition with private mobile food vendors that the city does not control, especially when the city is trying to promote more brick and mortar restaurants in downtown Elgin that contribute to the tax base. And the Chamber of Commerce puts on a mobile vending, food vending. And the Chamber of Commerce puts on a, a mobile vending, food vending event every Friday. I, I think it's all fall or all, all summer, I'm not sure the, the timeline, but they do, South Grove, they do that almost every Friday. So there is a lot of opportunity for the special use, temporary food establishment right now. What is their hardship? Are there, there's not enough, there's not enough of it, or what? It seems like we are really supporting them already. We have built spaces for them, we have special events for them to come and contribute. I don't see the need for a change of use amendment for conditional use because they are competing against our brick and mortar. And I have talked to other restaurants in town, Paul's Restaurant, some of the breakfast places. They, they would lose their, their Sunday morning crowd if there's a trailer at every church making pancakes and bacon and eggs. And this, this is an impact on our brick and mortar restaurants, even outside the CC one and CC two area. Any questions?
Does this end your presentation?
No, I've got three more slides. I tried to follow the ten-slide maximum rule so that we're not belaboring the point.
I do appreciate that. It looks like there might be a couple that are not allowed under this, this presentation, under this petition, so I might ask you to fast forward if, if staff agrees. I see at least a couple upcoming slides that have, it would appear to look like an overlap with upcoming petitions, so I would, I would encourage you to.
Yeah, we can skip, yeah, there seems to be a.
But I mean, we can certainly go to the next slide when you're ready.
Oh, no, this is right, this is right.
Okay.
Yeah. So, so the Wing Park food truck, as he had said, is kind of an outlier to, to.
So these are the slides I, I just think that we need to deal with when we get to the petition, if.
No, no, this, this is not, this is not to that petition. It, it just speaks to the reason that the tax amendment isn't needed for the Wing Park is because you have home rule and you have temporary use in, in, in the community, in the CF districts already. You don't need to change the amendment, the, the conditional, add this conditional use because you can already do it. You have a temporary use as an approved use, and you have home rule, and you've done it in these other locations already with, with the two other golf courses. I think it's a little bit inequity that you're giving Wing Park, which is a historic, one of the first park, public golf courses in the city.
So this part, I definitely want to say, let's save for the Wing Park. If you're speaking generally about community facility, I, please continue.
Well, let's just stick to the tax amendment part.
Yes, please.
So, as I said, this is a, this is not needed to have your food truck there. You can have your food truck there, there's a, the memorial trailer parked out here in City Hall right now. So we're, we're, we already have the ability to have the food truck there. Next slide? Okay. So the tax amendment will be very difficult to enforce on private property and on routine. The tax amendment will make it very difficult to enforce these private property, mobile food vendors and on a routine basis, giving them these mobile, given that they're mobile vehicles and not buildings, and that they're coming and going at all times. This amendment allows, also allows mobile vendors to have permanent spaces in Elgin, in downtown Elgin, operating and going into other communities, but storing their equipment in the open on the main arteries of our gateway lots in Elgin. So they can literally come and go as they please. If they get business in other lots, they can go there and come back. This is not allowed, this should not be allowed in the CC one and CC two area. The city will have less control than the private property and the fire department, and the health department cannot control these vehicles coming and going or, and stored. The CF and the commercial operation yard as a use of stored trailers like this is why the amendment, storing, storing trailers like this is why the amendment should not be accepted. Next slide, please. What you see on the slide pertains to the laws and requirements that, that are in.
Mr. Burner, one second, please. I'm going to ask staff to advance the presentation to, to at least slide fifteen. There's a code chart and some accessible obstructions. I think there's several slides upcoming that have images relating to at least two of the upcoming petitions. I don't think we want to introduce, go ahead.
No, I'm not, I'm not going that far, sir.
I'm sorry, Demir, what were you saying?
This last, this is, I believe, based on what the, Mr. Burner indicated to me, this is the last slide as part of this presentation. For this case, the subsequent slides will be then presented by Mr. Burner for the other petitions.
Got it, all right, I understand, thank you.
Yeah, sorry for that confusion.
Well, now I understand, our, our packet has all of them, so I just wanted, all right, all right, thank you.
Sorry, we should have clarified that when we handed them out, I apologize.
All right, I appreciate that, go ahead.
I did have some space slides in there to keep it clear and for convenience in printing, I eliminated them.
Understood.
So these are some of the requirements that we're not really following with this tax amendment. There's everything from the mobile, mobile, mobile homes, and they have requirements that you can't have the vehicle on the, on wheels and axles. And you actually literally have a law that's the, from the state of Illinois, that's the Mobile Home Safety Act, where these trailers have to be bolted down, strapped stainless steel and strapped down into the ground. And we don't have that ability because these are our regular vehicles and we're not, it does, you don't have that control. There's also the whole justification for the commercial yard with the, with the green space and the, and the foundation yard that we saw in the other presentation and landscaping. That, that doesn't apply. And the storage of flammable liquids, these trailers come with flammable tanks and things on them, and we're not, we're not putting them in a commercial yard, a commercial operation yard. So do not vote to recommend this tax amendment to the city council and, and table this decision until more data and information provided. How many temporary permits have been issued? Prove that there is a hardship for the mobile food vendors. What other cities have used the conditional use for mobile food vendors? How will this tax amendment improve prosperity for all the brick and mortar restaurants and existing buildings, existing businesses in the, in these districts? This is an opposite of the city goals to bring people together downtown and the master plan. Please do not change the direction of the city of Elgin, change the direction that the city has approved on this topic and the city council, which has been working on the, for the past twenty-five years with success. This amendment is not fully thought through. We have, we have a place for vendor, for mobile food vendors, and it's working. That's, I do not remember a lot of activity on the Riverfront Promenade, and we need to, we need to focus on what we already have. If it isn't broke, don't fix it. And remember, by not recommending this now does not stop the city and the staff from resubmitting the same exact change in the year, in a year from now, which is a short time when you're looking at planning. And it goes back to that quote I said, we can't be looking at just today and tomorrow. We have to look at what's best for the city and the overall direction that we are going. The sixty days does seem to be one of the larger amounts compared to the other ones that were noted in the background. Some of them were down to hours, some of them were not for overnight, three days, things like that. So I think that the system that we have is actually very generous towards the, the vendors. And if we allow these vendors, why aren't we allowing the bike guys? It seems like that's, that's a mute point. So again, this, when I talked to the National Bank, they were concerned because they want to give out mortgages and things like that. They don't want to have a temporary parking, parking lot with a temporary use. And we're overlaying the use on top of the existing use. And the, the washrooms that they're going to be using is four hundred feet away. What other uses do we have where the bathrooms can be on another piece of property four hundred feet away? It's just not in any of the other uses. And every building is designed with a certain amount of bathrooms by the square footage and the occupancy rate that they under their use. So it's, if you have, like in that previous petition, the square footage dictated how many bathrooms you should have. Now you're putting another use on top of it, and the, it isn't designed for the additional use and additional occupancy and addition for the bathroom. So what is required is now being used by a whole nother use. Thank you for your time. Any questions? Clarifications?
No, thank you. We, I apologize, I missed, my fellow commissioner just pointed out that we just crossed over the line into the other petition, so we're going to ignore that last part. But thank you for your, your presentation. Anyone else here tonight?
There was a four-hundred-foot number in there regarding the bathrooms. I don't see how that crossed over.
Just want to make sure we, we stay above board, so appreciate your presentation.
All right, thank you.
All right, sir, I believe, I believe you as well as some others came after people were sworn in. Is that correct? Were you sworn in?
I was still with my right hand.
You were, all right, well, then I apologize, I missed.
I recorded.
All right, I, I believe you, maybe, maybe you ducked out and came back, and I apologize. If you're, if you're sworn in, yes, come on up, please.
Yeah, my name is Chris Nwiti. I'm owner of two of the food trucks parked right now in Elgin. I wanted to, I have more to say about another petition, but I just wanted to touch base, couple of points that, Mr., sorry, I, I forgot your last name.
Sir, sir, you just addressed the commission, it's fine.
Okay, I'm sorry.
No, it's okay.
So I wanted to start from crucial point, which is, his presentation was about, at first, that it's, it's not good at all to have food trucks anywhere in Elgin, right? And then it changed that if it's not on private property but on public property, it's completely fine. There were some accusations about how food trucks are maintained, how they park, how they dig in dirt, how dirty they are, how very, very not due diligence made on this topic because it's not like that. And my question here is, the whole point of, of Mr. Presentation wasn't that his property is located just right, right next to food trucks that are currently parked in Elgin.
Let's make sure we don't go into upcoming presentations.
I don't want to make any accusations, but likely this person had my trailer put up, not this one, the other one, on the, on the board. So my question here to the opposi, my opposition to the opposition is, is it personal or is it actual city of Elgin concern? Because I believe this is very personal about this topic. And I also wanted to add, just quick, because, you know, it took a lot of time, so just quick, about how this is different from brick and mortar locations. So trailer cost, one of the trailers costs usually about one-third of brick and mortar location, which is true. It's cheaper to start, but also it's not easier to start because usually food trucks are operated by family-owned businesses, right? Most of them are minorities that want to spread the culture, right? Because it doesn't, doesn't matter, if they are cheaper, it doesn't matter, they provide lower quality of food. Actually, they provide better quality of food because we don't have storage. We don't have any, we of course have commissaries, but commissaries don't allow, don't allow us to store as much food as you would like. So we mostly do shopping in the morning in local markets, local vendors, not very big corporations like Costco or Walmart. We just go straight to whatever is available in Elgin because it's closed. I wanted to say also that trailers do not park. They are moved all the time because our income is mostly through summer period, which are festivals. So like me, I travel everywhere, whole Illinois, and my trailers are only parked for two days in a week where I have a break to gather up, regroup, and all that stuff. So just because there's one trailer in South Elgin, it doesn't mean that all trailers are like that. Next point was that repairs. So believe me, if somebody put hundred thousand in the trailer, we don't repair on the street. We rather go to the specialists and repair it, repair it at the mechanic shop.
Sir, before, before you, sir, before you continue, please make sure you're addressing your comments to the, to the board.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. This is my first time.
It's okay.
So, sorry.
No, it's, it's all good, we, again, we just want to keep things of a board. I think I mentioned it before, Mark kind of backed me up there, so yeah, we want to, we want.
Okay, I apologize.
Plus, we want to see your, your eyeballs anyway.
I apologize.
You're good, you're good.
So again, we don't repair outside, we go to specialists to repair it onsite in the mechanic shop. We don't want to be liable for any screws left outside, flat tires and stuff. So we don't do this, definitely. And especially when we spend so much money on, on our businesses, we don't want to do it ourselves. We, we just continue spending money so they, they, they are up to date and they are, you know, up to some standards. So next, next point was about how dirty they are, rodents, insects and stuff. Again, we don't store anything in our trailers. There is no way there is something coming to the trailer to eat anything or spread disease or anything. Also, because we travel a lot and we have our festivals, we are checked weekly, unlike brick and mortar locations once a year. So we travel to Kane County, to DuPage County, Cook County, and all of these departments, health departments are very strict. And if we pass inspections everywhere, that means we are compliant with all regulations by health departments. Also, fire departments are also onsite, most, most of the events, like every weekend, we have inspection from fire departments. We had also inspection from Elgin Fire Department that said they never seen, at least in my case, such a good setup when it comes to protection of not to spread a fire, okay? The next point was about that if it catches fire, nobody knows about it. Actually, no, most of us have commercial-grade systems that notify call centers about the possible smoke, and they immediately transfer call to fire station nearby. So that's another point, that it's not dangerous anyhow. So next point was the Elgin, so Elgin itself, why would it be worse than any other city like Warrenville, Aurora, Naperville, they all have this in place. Food trucks are allowed everywhere literally, and they ask for food trucks because food trucks provide something unique. Mostly, as I said, minorities are owners, so they provide unique, unique food. They provide also a little bit like turnaround about with, with employees because we. They provide also a little bit like turnaround with employees, because we move our employees, right, from place to place, so they work in different cities. We also pay taxes in these cities, and so why we wouldn't pay taxes in sales taxes in Elgin, right? The next point was, oh, that trailers rust. They don't rust, because they are made from polycor, which is a special material that doesn't rust, and they don't do anything else on them, because DMV doesn't allow that. And if trailer was built in America, ninety-nine percent sure it's made of polycor. If it was made in Mexico, that's a different story, but that's up to DMV if they allow it or not. If anything is built in America, they are built from polycor, which doesn't rust. Insurance, our insurance is no less, no worse than the brick and mortar location, and sometimes even more expensive, because we travel, we move, so we have more risk factors. So we pay even more in insurance, we pay more in, somebody said, "Prepared you taxes." Okay, we don't have prepared you taxes, but we pay more in other fees to different institutions. Like for instance, our fee for health department is higher than the brick and mortar location. So one more point about fire suppression. So we have it checked yearly, at least, by two institutions. First is the commercially operated and approved by the special township, specific township company that does all the labeling, and they check compliance if fire system is good. And then after they do their job, fire department comes and they double-check it if they correctly did all of that. So there is double. And again, most of food trucks travel, and if they travel, they travel to different cities, and every week they have inspections. Like myself, I have two of them, and I have weekly inspections in all of the counties nearby. So I don't, there's no way I'm worse than a brick and mortar location, just because I'm moving mobile food vendor, right? Okay. The next thing was about, no other cities like, no other cities have more than Elgin allows, which is again not true, because there is Naperville, there's Aurora, Crystal Lake has even more food trucks than Elgin, and nobody sees any issues with that, because again, they provide unique food, unique taste, that people usually don't have ability to go to, because brick and mortars are usually one type of cuisine. Next point is about the riverfront side. So again, is it about trucks in Elgin, or is it about the private property that somebody else has business in, right? About lunches and breakfast, we don't do that, because food trucks are mostly about cuisine that doesn't apply to breakfast and early morning starts. So all the breakfast places are very safe, especially the one in Elgin by the lake, definitely safe. Trailer size, so ninety-nine percent of trailers are not longer than twenty feet, and this is because most of the festivals allow only twenty feet, because this is a regular vendor Twenty feet allows maximum of two axles, five thousand pounds per axle, so ten thousand pounds total. DMV doesn't allow any more than that, so none of the trailers is more than ten thousand pounds, which doesn't cause any harm to streets. And yeah, that would be pretty much about it, about my opposition to the other opposition. And I would like to speak one more time, if I can, about the other petition that more applies to DuPage Street. Thank you.
And sir, before you sit down, could you spell your name for our court reporter, please?
It's Kristof, K-R-Z-Y-S-Z-T-O-F. I'm Polish, by the way.
Is that a first name or a last name?
That's my first name. My last name is N-O-W-I-C-K-I.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Always want to help our court reporter. All right, anyone else in the audience who has comments on this citywide text? All right. And were you sworn in earlier?
I was not, no.
All right, so again, I apologize, sir, thinking you weren't, but is there anyone else in the audience who may have come in mid-petition that wasn't sworn in? All right, if you're going to speak, we might as well go ahead and swear you in, whether it's on this petition or upcoming petitions. So if you can, please stand and face the court reporter. Ma'am, you can stay there. You just raise your right hand and...
Hands, please. Do solemnly swear, or affirm the testimony you're about to give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? Thank you.
All right, thanks for that sidetrack there. So come on up, please, and tell us your thoughts.
Hi, sorry. My name's Nicole Prokop, and I C-O-L-E-P-R-O-K-O-P. I live in the Elgin Art Space Art Lofts, and I initially came in to speak about the 215 DuPage Street.
So again, we're focused on, okay, good, good.
Yes, yes. I am focused on this one, just from some information that I learned through the hearing. I think my main concern, not about the food trucks, it's solely about the location, it's about them being on private property. The way that the food trucks operate now, they're either through the, like at City of Elgin events, they're at Festival Park, they're at the farmer's market on Fridays. I feel very comfortable with them being there. There's always Elgin, City of Elgin workers onsite. It feels very safe. I know that if they're on private property, there's not much management of what's going on in the food trucks. I'm not super familiar with how the inspections and stuff like that kind of run, but at least knowing the area in which they're in, I believe that the City of Elgin, the downtown area specifically, is a very small area. It's two-lane traffic, one each way. There's not much area for food trucks to go on. There's, if there are events, I feel that food trucks are more eligible or able to be at those events. That way they can have some crowd go to them, but I don't see them really prospering on private property. I also know that they've, from what was said earlier, that there is food trucks in Naperville, Aurora, Crystal Lake. I see that that seems very alluring, that the food trucks are kind of coming into those areas. I do also know that the median household income in those areas is larger than that of Elgin. I know that me visiting food trucks, it is usually higher cost than the regular brick and mortar. I frequent the locations in downtown Elgin pretty frequently when I can. So I don't think that the food trucks being in downtown Elgin year-round, I just don't see them being very prosperous and doing very well. And I just don't think the location is right for them. I also have some concerns on like health and safety, inspections, sort of that kind of stuff. And yeah, the rest of what I'm saying, it's not for this one. Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Come on up.
My name's Alyssa, A-L-Y-S-S-A, last name Wilson, W-I-L-S-O-N. It's almost my bedtime, I'm going to make it quick. Hi, I work up the street, I serve the community, and these are my own opinions. I work for Pace, I serve for Parat Transit in Batavia, Hoffman Estates, Naperville, Aurora. I did Aurora this morning, 5:15 in the morning, and tomorrow I'm going to be serving Elgin, five in the morning, I think. I wanted to say that I see food trucks populating, because they offer mobility and they're more eco-friendly. I also deal with trailers, I was a trailer driver for a few years, and food trucks are very small, they do not take a lot of space, and that makes them very mobile. I do participate in a lot of restaurants locally, because I live right off Division Street, and a lot of the restaurants are in support from restaurant owners that I know, Kelly from Sugar and Spice, and the Food Mart, and Viva Natural, and Be Unique. I talk to them all the time, I go there all the time, I spend about like four hundred dollars a month on food, because I don't have the time to cook. And they're actually looking forward to you guys' decision in regards to welcoming food trucks, and if it requires more adjustment, you know, for the local neighbors where they're parked. But food trucks mainly are not maintained where they serve. They are maintained off-site at a mechanic's bay, just like we maintain our fleet off-site at a mechanic's bay. So there, I understand what Mr. Burna, the architect, was saying, but there is some discrepancy with understanding the daily operations of a trailer. And small twenty-foot trailers for food to draw crowds in, some of them want to operate on Sundays, which would be great, because on Sundays there are limited food options in downtown Elgin. There is only one coffee shop open, that's Sugar and Spice on East Chicago. Sugar and Rhyme, sorry. Sorry, Kelly's shop, I call her Kelly, sorry, that's Kelly. She just got married. Arabica Coffee's gone, which I loved, I love that place, oh my God, I got fat from that place. And then, what, I think Schwarmestop might be, Schwarmestop might not be open on Sundays. Udon Noodle, Udon Nomi is open on Sundays, limited hours. But if these vendors are open, I think it would give the local residents more options for food, help them save on costs from DoorDash, for sure, and also help some of the people in crisis, because I volunteer at the Crisis Center when I can, right on Geneva, and it would help them too. They have limited budgets, and they're able to get some food. If they can't walk over to Summit to go to Aldi's, or to go to Larkin, they can come right here, it's right next to the Crisis Center, because sometimes the Crisis Center runs out of food to give to people who ask. But if they have limited budget, they could probably get food at the food trucks. And that's all I have to say. You guys have a good night.
Thank you.
Okay, bye.
Anyone else? Come on up.
Hello, I just have a couple of quick questions regarding the text amendment. My name is H-A-L-I-E. I also go by L-E-I-G-H, Lee. My last name is H-U-G-E-N-B-E-R-G. In the text amendment, we just saw a summary of it, essentially. It does say that the food truck should try to limit nuisances. What does that mean? Who determines what is a nuisance? How do you define what is a nuisance? And how, you know, how does one limit the nuisance, and how do you define that? It says specifically limit and not eliminate. So let's say, you know, someone calls in, does that count as being a nuisance? If one person calls in, who is checking for potential nuisances? And then I think that for the text amendment too, it can be on private property, but I think that a revision should be added, or a change should be added to specify consideration of proximity to residencies, and, you know, going hand-in-hand with the nuisance issue as well. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, anyone else here want to speak on this citywide text amendment for this item?
Is this consumer, can speak now?
No, almost.
All right, you heard their response, correct? All right, thank you. All right. Sure, I guess, just to make sure, we are talking about the citywide, Wing Park is next, and then DuPage will follow that. All right, I believe everyone who wished to have the opportunity, had the chance to speak, so we will close the public hearing portion, and I'm guessing city staff, as the applicant, would like to respond to some of the items brought up.
Yeah, just at a thirty thousand foot view, there was a lot of discussion about the city control and lack thereof, and the allegations that there would, that these would be unsafe. And that the temporary use process in our home rule ability is already enough, and no need to expand that through the conditional use process. And I think there's just a misunderstanding of what that allows, and what that includes, and what the conditional use of process affords persons, so I thought I'd just elaborate on that briefly. A temporary home rule allows municipalities to zone, and in the zoning, we establish land use regulations. And through the land use regulations, a food truck or trailer can locate on business property where you can have an eating establishment for no more than sixty days. And persons have expressed a desire to do more than that. So that is not currently allowed, they can't do that without the text amendment that is before you. It was suggested why, who else uses conditional uses? I found no communities, no. That doesn't mean that there aren't there, but in trying to string together Google searches with special use, conditional use, food truck process, I found none that use the conditional use process. More so, they use an annual permit, annual license, and allow these to locate at either established food truck locations on street, or on private property with a variety of different restrictions, a variety of different operational parameters, be it number of days, be it hours of operation, limits on liquor sales, distance to other food handling establishments or restaurants, which could then be varied if you went up and knocked on the door of that restaurant and said, "Hey, is it okay if I put my food truck here?" It's my opinion, having done this for now more than thirty years, that this is exactly what the conditional use process affords the city. It affords public notice, signs go up on the property, and we have an opportunity to work through those potential issues, be it the type of food, the hours of operation, the proximity to other uses. There were suggestions that a tenant could come in and change the use without the owner knowing, that's not the case. A conditional use process requires, as the commission knows, permission from the property owner. So that's simply not the case. And I would offer that, from speaking on behalf of our health department and our fire department, these are inspected, and they are safe. In fact, I'm aware of a food truck, I'm not going to get into where, that was not allowed to operate, because it didn't have an appropriate hood system, a hood system in a food truck or trailer. So the flammable tanks, yep, they're there, they're regulated. The health department, making sure that everything's clean and sanitary, places to wash your hands, food is stored appropriately, at the appropriate temperatures, that's all covered. If there was anything that I missed, that the commission may have had specific questions about, or would like me to elaborate on, I'd be happy to do so at the time, but at least it's our opinion that the conditional use affords you that opportunity to add a sense of vibrancy, which is exactly what the city center master plan requests, that the comprehensive plan looks for, and the strategic plan is looking for. Enhance vitality, add a vibrancy, add life to places that might not otherwise have it.
I had a few notes, but I'm trying, like you said, stay at the thirty or even thirty-two-thousand, five-hundred foot level. I'm going to actually start with the other commissioners and see if maybe those come up. So Commissioner Abwali, questions for the petitioner?
I feel like there's some confusion, because people don't know what we do on a regular basis. So just to simplify, since we're doing conditional use, it means we have to go through an entire process if somebody asks for, it's not going to be food trucks that are free-for-all, correct?
Correct, that's a...
There is a process of notification, there's a process of planning and zoning, there's a potential process of city council, all of those things have to happen before a food truck facility can be approved.
Hundred percent correct. There would be a sign... There would be a sign posted on the property, as was for these other two applications. There will be mailed notice to at least 200, to property owners and residents and occupants within 250 feet of the property. There's a notice that goes in the newspaper, then that affords persons to come and review the application in advance, hear the application, at a public hearing, where we have a court reporter, where this esteemed body makes a recommendation, then on to city council. And it's not a, it's not a snap-your-fingers-and-everything-is-done type of a process, absolutely not. We advise people that from the time you submit a complete application, you should expect at least 60 to 90 days to go through that process, no matter how fast we try to, we try to make it.
Thank you.
Well, thank you. You asked one of the questions on my list, so it made my list shorter. Commissioner Jones, questions for staff?
Would there be any possibility of expanding that to city property as well, making available, I don't know what the number is, of places that a food truck could be under those same circumstances, or similar circumstances, like Lord's Park, we're getting Wing Park in there, Lord's Park down at Riverside Drive, you know, maybe it's just Saturdays or Sundays, maybe it's, would there be something like that that could be entertained along with this?
If those properties are ZONCF, which most likely they are, then if the Parks and Recreation Department determined that that was in their best interest, considering everything else that they may have going on in those parks, they absolutely could come and make an application just like they have for Wing Park.
I think what I'm saying is, could the city include and make available five to 10 locations that would be, that a food truck could apply to be parked on, and not administered by private property, what I'm saying, just administered by City Hall in some way, of those popular locations?
That's certainly a possibility. That's not what we have before you today. We can put that in the proverbial parking lot, and consider it at a future time. There are communities that do that. They have first-come, first-served basis, and it's open to any and all food trucks that are licensed and have been inspected, and
And approved by the city.
Yep.
Yeah, I think that would be a great addition to this text amendment. I wrote down, tie-downs are for residential units when we're talking, we don't typically see a food truck being tied down or anything, and I know a lot of even those are not made to certain standards. That's a different one. Okay. I think that we're all kind of blending all these petitions together, because we have three food truck items on one agenda, so it's a little muddier.
Understood, right. Right. This is, this is the, this is the parameters, I guess, to say, that allows the subsequent two applications to come forward.
Right, which is why I appreciate everyone understanding my job, trying to make sure we stay focused on each one, so I don't mean to be harsh or cut anyone off, I just want to make sure we, we consider each petition individually, even though they are very much tied together. And kudos, you took another question off my list. Commissioner Valdez, challenge rolls over to you.
Not a problem. I just have a question. Maybe I'm way too far ahead of the game, but is there, or will there be a limit of how many permits the city will give out or allow to have food trucks?
No, that's generally not the purpose of zoning. Very rarely is it, is it used to, in some way restrain, or the free market, so that's not proposed as part of this application.
Okay, that was my question.
All right. I think there was a question about considering proximity, which I think was a good comment, and would be considered in petitions for specific conditions. The other thing I think was a good question, which I appreciate the member from the public coming up and displaying clearly that she read this text amendment, is, let's talk a little bit about the nuis, nuisances?
Nuisances, sure.
I can't say the word, and as well as who determines, and how they're monitored, and all those things, and reducing versus keeping it at zero, and
Sure. Well, and again, therein lies the beauty of the conditional use process, right? What might be a nuisance to one because you're right next door, might not be a nuisance if you're, if you're 500 feet, 800 feet, 1,000 feet away. By virtue of the conditional use application, there's an opportunity to dig into those details and make sure, to the best that we can, that those are mitigated. And in some instances, as this commission is charged, and ultimately city council, if those potential negative secondary impacts, which that's the term we like to use, cannot be mitigated, that there aren't either, that there are conditions or operational parameters that can be placed on the application, that it's this body's duty to recommend that city council deny that. So, for example, in looking through what other communities did, and thinking about what those potential nuisances could be, it's been talked about, you know, how long do generators run? So one of the charges in the list of things that an applicant has to put before you is to describe what's the power source. That's just but one example.
Appreciate that. The last one, you may or may not be able to answer, since it involves a third party, is, did the DNAs say why they got about a 10% return?
They didn't.
Okay. Then I don't expect you to answer, but I thought I would, just in case, so that's all I had for you. So I appreciate that. All right. With that discussion, great comments from the audience, and great questions from the commission. It is time for the chair to entertain a motion for this petition, which is 22-25.
I move to recommend that city council approve petition 22-25, subject to the conditions outlined within our packet, and to adopt the findings of the commissions, those findings also provided within our packet.
Thank you. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Staff, please call the roll.
Commissioner Abwali?
Yes.
Commissioner Valdez?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
And Chairman Cox?
Yes.
The motion's approved, four to zero.
All right, thank you. All right. With that approved, now I believe we can consider the next two conditional uses. But the first one is for 1012 Wing Street, petition 18-25.
Well, so the next petition before you is the application by city staff, our Great Parks Department, as applicant, and the City of Elgin as a property owner, requesting a conditional use to establish a mobile food vendor to be stationed near the new Wing Park clubhouse at the property commonly referred to as 1012 Wing Street. And again, for the record, we have provided the required notice on this petition. So Wing Park, difficulties with the PowerPoint system here, seems to be working on the laptop, but not on the overall screen. I'm going to shut down some of these things. Apologies, just a couple minutes.
While staff's reloading that, I was just going to say, as a dad, when my wife, who is down here in the front, used to work in the medical community, I would have to bring my daughter to these meetings, or I should say, instead of have to, get to, and I would sit on the end of the dais, and she'd sit up here in color with me. So hearing your daughters in the back there having a little bit of activity, and I don't want any of you to stress about that, it's a very pleasant thing to hear youngsters in the audience. I want to encourage you for having brought them tonight.
Okay, so Wing Park is, encompasses approximately 121 acres. It's a city park that is on the northwest side of the city. Outline here in yellow includes a variety of amenities that include a public pool, a ban shell for outdoor performances, tennis courts, baseball, basketball court, baseball and softball fields, playground, and a nine-hole public golf course. As you can see, the park itself is bounded by the Union Pacific Railroad on the north end, with some light industrial properties to the north, that include the Habitat for Elgin Resale Store, and the Fox Valley Flea Market, those are accessible off of State Street. Then to the east and to the south are single-family homes. Those to the east are ZONRC2, and then the ones to the, excuse me, RC3, and then those to the south are RC2s. And then to the west are a variety of residential properties, including multifamily homes, townhomes, and single-family homes, all ZONRC. So the city Parks Department is proposing to have one mobile food vendor stationed at the Wing Park clubhouse. This is the bird's-eye view of the entrance into the Wing Park and the golf course. The existing clubhouse is right here at the front, closest to Wing Street, with the surface parking lot adjacent to the west. So the city is about to commence construction on a new 9,600-square-foot Wing Park Golf Course clubhouse, that would be indicated here, this is the existing one, that will be approximately 40 to 50 feet north of the existing clubhouse, that would remain, it would be probably repurposed for other purposes such as storage, and perhaps event spaces and whatnot. The new Wing Park clubhouse would include a bar, restaurant, a pro shop, indoor driving range, and three golf simulators. On the lower level, the facility would include storage for golf carts. The area between the existing clubhouse and the new clubhouse would be designed as an outdoor plaza, its seating, and this is where the new mobile food vendor would be located, indicated here in red, so on the north side of the existing clubhouse, tucked away and away from the public view. This is part of a larger initiative by the city to modernize our guest experiences throughout the city's facilities, and to also supplement food offerings and amenities that are offered at the clubhouses. So the construction of the new clubhouse would include the necessary utilities for the mobile food vendor, including the water, gas, and electrical hookups. The new clubhouse would include a new trash enclosure that would be enclosed with a six-foot-high solid fence, that would also include receptacles for the mobile food vendor. The new facility, the new clubhouse, would include a grease interceptor that would be installed as part of the new kitchen, and would process waste generated by the mobile food vendor. The exact vendor would be selected at a later date to complement the food offerings at the new clubhouse. The proposed mobile food vendor, the food truck, is considered an accessory use to the existing clubhouse and the overall Wing Park, and as such, does not have its own parking requirement. Adequate parking for that is provided throughout the park. So this is obviously subject to the previous petition going through and being approved. If that previous petition is indeed approved at the city council, then food, or mobile food vendors would be allowed as conditional uses in the CF district, such as the Wing Park. And so this application would then have to satisfy the standards for conditional use. We have gone over the standards in our staff report, and we have evaluated them, and we find that all standards have been satisfied, subject to the generally standard conditions in the back of the staff report. And with that, staff recommends approval, and our park staff is here that can answer the questions as well.
Sounds good. Commissioner Valdez, you have any questions for staff?
No questions.
Commissioner Jones, questions for staff?
No questions.
Commissioner Abwali?
It says one truck. If they decide on two, or three, or four, do they have to resubmit?
Yes.
They do. And does the temporary license that we currently issue, that is still in effect? They could continue to use that if they just need a truck for 15 days, or whatever it is?
That is, if they have not, if this property has not used up its temporary use allowance for the year, then they would be permitted to apply for a temporary use, and if that temporary use is for an additional food truck or food trucks, they could have multiple food trucks as part of that temporary use, they could do that.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right. I don't have any questions for you.
Okay.
So as before, we will open this petition up to public comment, and just a reminder, this is for 1012 Wing Street. We have one person on the sign-in, Greg Burna, and then we'll, once we go through that, then we'll come back to anyone else in the audience.
Damir, can you go to 14, or the floor plan of the
I apologize. I skipped the petitioner, but Commissioner Jones just reminded me, I kind of assumed, I apologize to Mr. Burna, that the city was the petitioner. Did I misunderstand that?
Yes, you did. We can have the Parks Department present additional information. They're an actual applicant, rather than community development staff, and they probably have a little bit more information in case the commission has some questions.
Well, then I would love to have you come on up and do that. Thank you, Commissioner Jones, for making sure we, no, no, I'm very thankful that you reminded me of that.
Thanks for allowing me to come out. It's very cold back there, so those steps were wonderful for me. I'm actually breathing and walking, it's wonderful. So it's very cold back there. Mike Lehman, Director of Golf for the City of Elgin, been with the city since 1997, very excited for this type of project. I've been obviously involved in the multiple facilities that we've developed over the years, including the Highlands of Elgin, Bose Creek, both of those involving multiple scenarios with restaurateurs and full brick-and-mortar restaurants. This is a very unique and classic golf course, the oldest nine-hole municipal golf course in Illinois. Every dollar that's spent on this is golfer profit-driven dollars, so this is not derived from tax dollars. So I know one of the people that were, kind of wrote a note to the petition, was concerned about his taxes going up, and, you know, if you play golf, you've spent some money on what we're building. So that's one point that I did want to make you guys aware of. The, because this is kind of unique, our industry is going into kind of a unique phase. They call it screengrass, as opposed to green grass, because most of golf is played in green grass. But this newer, in the last five, really since the pandemic kind of came to be, we started kind of doing some simulator, and the business kind of went into the simulator world, and about 20% of our, the nation's business is now simulator golf, so, which is a hospitality environment. And then this is the city's first chance of kind of diving into this hospitality environment, and we're very excited to have these three simulators, and more than just golf, there's, you can have a soccer team go in and rent the simulators and practice their shots. So there's, it's going to be something that's more than just golf. And so I think this position and the ability to have a food truck in the courtyard allows us to serve more than just golfers, which traditionally, that's what our focus is, it's golfers and neighborhood and that type of thing. So very excited to bring this forward. One thing, just kind of to note, if you just do a quick Google search on the length of a lifetime for a restaurant, it's between five and seven years. Building structures that are permanent, when you have a lifetime average between five and seven years, doesn't make a lot of sense these days. So the logic of going mobile has some, has some, you know, real good premise in what's happening now, and I think that's kind of critical, and part of our business plan, was to have that flexibility. Since 97, and I have been here Since 97, and I have been here a while, it seems, I've gone through five or six different operators at our current facilities because of that same five-to-seven-year type of life cycle of a restaurant. And that doesn't mean that there can't be those fantastic facilities, Grant Ankin's, you know, living it 20 years and creating some great environments and doing the marketing behind it and creating an adaptive menu. Those things still exist, and that doesn't mean that we can't do that because we, and that's what we plan to do, but we can still do it within our permanent side of our operation. So, ours is a little unique because of that. We do have the permanent component, we have storage inside. We want a mobile food truck so we can take it to our storage facilities in the winter for preparation, anything that might be needed to the actual vehicle. So, you know, we've, we're kind of in the middle. But we really feel like there is a place for food trucks. There is a place for this unique atmosphere that will serve Elgin and the Wing Park community for many years to come and be adaptive to change, which is ever-critical, you know, as we move forward as a community. Any questions?
We'll certainly take the opportunity to ask them, by Commissioner Jones.
I was really excited about it, but I'm kind of sad to learn and happy that it's all golf money. I thought this was like a drive to increase our parks. I was all excited about what was going to happen now with the Lord's Park and East Side Rec Center, so.
Well, it's just a funding source. So, I mean, us golfers, we like to give, we're givers. So, we're paying for this. And, you know, down the line, there may be opportunities for the city to resource tax dollars to pay for things in other parks.
Yeah, I love it. Yeah, thank you for your presentation.
Commissioner Valdez?
No questions, good presentation.
Thank you.
Commissioner Obwali?
I'm good with you paying for it.
Thank you.
No questions.
I don't have any questions for you. I just want to extend the offer. You can sit up front here instead of sitting in the back if you want.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, now moving back to the proper steps. We'll open this petition up to public comment. So, as before, there's one name on the list, which is Mr. Greg Burna. Once we go through him, then if there's anyone else, you can come on up, sir. Yes, sir. I appreciate you holding my feet to the fire like that, but yes, this time I'm sure.
Well, thank you. Trying, I'm trying. Here we go. Starting at 1415? Yeah, 14 there. There you go. I think this is a left-handed problem here. So, the clubhouse has a kitchen, a catering kitchen, and a large walk-in freezer in the basement. This is going to be a great facility, bar none. That's great, and the other facilities have worked out very well as country-club style at the other two golf courses. However, I thought that the catering kitchen was for caterers to bring in food or even DoorDash or Uber Eats and give you that flexibility of other varieties of food. There is about the same amount of space designated to that as there is to the kitchen. So, it seems to me that we should try and utilize this without going with the food trucks as a permanent fixture. That's the issue that we have with the change of use, is that it's a permanent food truck that will be there, it's got utilities tied to it, and it's got sanitation and everything, all the necessary utilities tied to it. The problem is that, if you go to the next slide, is that the kitchens are designed for handicap accessibility, but the food trucks are not. Not only just getting a ramp up into the, into a food truck, but there's not enough clearance within a food truck that's required. There's requirements for how high you can reach and how much room the aisles need to be, and objects that are protruding, and forward motion and things like that, door swings and everything like that. And that's why the temporary use doesn't have to meet the ADA, but a building would. And that's the point that even though you have the zoning for this and everything, it's a permanent use, it's going to be there, and you won't be able to have handicap, it's not accessible to handicap employees and patrons unless they make accommodations with lower windows or things like that. So, there needs to be a little bit more far thought on how this this food truck actually functions because it is not meeting the ADA. And that is something that the city has to follow on all their facilities. There's also a concern, it's the location. If you could go back to your location or in the next slide, there you go. So, this unique building has a very large overhang, it's part of the style back in 1908. And it probably should be registered on the Historic Landmark Program, and you could get funding for it, so that could help out with the funding. But parking this is basically five feet, and it's a five-foot overhang. So, you have exhaust with grease vapors that can ignite, and it's a wood roof. It really needs to be further away. The fire department you need to coordinate with, they're not going to be able to fight the fire between those two structures. And I think they'll have a different location. With the catch basin being right there, all the water's going to run under there, it's going to freeze up and things like that. But the main concern is that you have drift loads and things like that, so you should move it off to your construction, your commercial yard, so that it doesn't have the design for drifting and snow loads. So, they literally can dump on there, and it's, you know, an issue with weather and winter and things like that. So, as much as we want the variety, I think we can get that from catering. And the architecture, I think, matches the existing structure very well. And this is not historic in any way. So, those are some of the main concerns that I think you should consider. And you can keep it a temporary situation. You can have more variety and more trailers and maybe more out in the grass area and pour some more concrete slabs if you feel. But to keep it moving and stuff like that, where this is kind of a permanent fixture with the canopies and wedged in there between the two buildings is a fire issue as well as a structural issue with snow loads and wind loads and uplift and things like that, and not meeting the ADA requirements that are mandatory. Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else in the audience? Yes, sir.
Hi, my name is Vince, V-I-N-C-E, Moy, M-O-Y. I just live down the block from there, and I'm kind of excited to see something like this happen. Although, my questions are, which wasn't in any of the things that I saw, were like, operational times, is this like going to be part of the same hours as the clubhouse? Or is it going to be extended to, there's a lot of events after hours. Is it, you know, the golf course closes at sundown at 6 o'clock, but I know that there's, they have soccer games there, or people use the soccer facility. Is this going to be extended to that type of timeframe and stuff like that? And actually, where it is, across the street, many decades ago, it was a snack house there where they used to sell snacks, and that used to be a ballroom, something like that. Why a food truck? Why can't this be, I see that it is supposedly a permanent type of situation for this food truck? Or that's what I'm hearing. Why can't it be a snack house type of thing? You already have a kitchen or something in the bigger clubhouse, and can you extend this to be more like a, I don't know, like a, not a small thing, but like a candy house? Or is that what, kind of like the food they're looking at for this food truck type of thing? And I think another thing is that if you're putting a food truck there, to me, it feels like you're in competition with your own self against the clubhouse, where the clubhouse has this restaurant, and now you have a food truck out there. Me being frugal, I probably would eat at the food truck and not spend money at the clubhouse, which might have different food, I understand, but I'm going to be on the cheaper side, let's say. So, I feel that there's a competition, and if this is a city thing, you know, I know it's a golfer paid and stuff like that, but where does the clubhouse money go? Or more so, where the food truck money is going to go? Back into the clubhouse? Or is it more towards the truck owner? Is this a city-owned truck as well? Because I didn't, I'm not sure, you know? So, yeah, that's all I have for now, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? We'll actually, sir, we'll take all the questions, we'll give you a chance to respond to questions everyone might have. All right, anyone else want to comment on this petition? Now's your opportunity. Come on up, sir. If you're not within 250 feet, I don't believe you can question the petitioner, but you can make comments about the petition. Ah, yes, you can post questions to us, I apologize, I want to make sure that's clear. And we are taking, I am taking notes, I believe, committee development directors taking notes as well.
Chris O'Keefe again. My question about this is, I understand it's going to be controlled by city, right? By Park District, right? If, that might probably answer also the question that my previous person had. Would there be a bidding process for a private operator to operate on the premise? And I believe also, that's my comment on this, I think it would be cheaper to, for the city to put private operator that pays percentage of sales to the city or to Park District instead of remodeling the whole building to provide a, like, counter space to give out meals. Comment to my previous, previous person that was previously speaking also, ADA. This is the fact that food trucks and trailers are not ADA-compliant from outside. However, we are not chained inside, and we are not in jail. We can go outside, and we usually do when we see a person with a disability, and it applies same rule, just be person, be human to that person. Like, we provide public service workers or a police department, fire department with discounts. Same with people with, like, veterans, people with disabilities. We provide discounts to these people, and if anybody has any issues coming up to the window, we always go outside. I just believe it's, it might not be compliant with the code, but it's a human reaction, and food truck owners are, again, family-oriented, and we really do such things, and we don't operate like corporations that need to have everything by rules in order to still satisfy these rules. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else for 1012 Wing Street? All right, seeing none, would invite the petitioner to come back up. We do have a few questions. If you've taken notes on those, feel free to answer the ones you've got. Mr. Mylot and myself will kind of comb through the other notes we might have taken.
Sure. If I recall, the first comment was related to the hours of the operation. Hours of the operation would not be the scale of the, of Chip Shot's whiskey and simulator bar, which will be inside the building. So, that will obviously go into the evening, will have longer hours. The cater kitchen built inside would be a place that we could actually store products, put in steamers, and the same menu inside would be the same one on the food truck. The second point of the revenues and expenses, they're all ours. So, revenues are ours, the expenses are ours. A labor contract would be something that we would propose to the city council. And that is something we did an RFP for a couple months back. I apologize, I don't recall, everything's kind of a blur. It's been, certainly a couple months ago, we are in the middle of negotiating, and legal has a labor agreement that they are reviewing at this point in time, that we are working with that Chip Shot's whiskey bar operator, who also will handle the food truck. The food truck is a very small portion of the business plan compared to the whiskey bar and simulator space. The intention of this facility will be, in very short time, to be, you know, generating revenues of around $900,000 a year. Any shortage will come from golfers that are playing the other two facilities, so. Yeah, but it will be, the RFP has already been let and is under review. We do have a local operator that we are negotiating with currently.
Mr. Mylot, did you have anything, all right?
Operational times, city-owned, and the bidding process.
All right. I do have one question that was brought up, and it could be for either of you gentlemen. The codes are, you know, listed, obviously always listed in the staff report about compliance. Can find it the second, but it's, we're always complying with all applicable codes and ordinances as part of our recommendation. But was there any, like, who may have actually looked at the distance to buildings issues that were brought up?
So, whenever the food vendors ultimately selected, and we have the actual food truck that is part of this idea, once it's stationed there and parked, the both health department and the fire department go out there to make inspections. I suspect that this facility will have to be minimum 10 feet away from the wall of the existing clubhouse. That seems to be the number that they keep requiring for other food trucks. So, they will do the onsite inspections when the food truck is there onsite to be ready for inspections.
Okay. All right, and I did look it up while we're sitting here. And I guess I wanted to verify, does the city, to your knowledge, have any specific codes related to the accessibility? Because it appears the Illinois Accessibility Code specifically does not control accessibility with relation to food trucks.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I don't know off the top of my head whether they do or don't, but if there is rules, regulations, codes, then they'll have to be followed.
That's what I thought, thank you. Those are my only questions, and I think you covered the important ones, thank you.
Thank you, Chairman, thank you.
All right, since you already touched on the microphone, look to staff for any final comments.
Nothing further to add. Staff recommends approval subject to conditions in the packet.
All right, with that, the Chair will entertain a motion for this petition, which is 18-25.
I move to recommend that the city council approve petition.
I move to recommend that the city council approve petition, what is it, 1825, subject to the conditions outlined within the staff report, and to adopt as the findings of the commission, the documents and conditions provided within such staff report.
Thank you, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Staff, please call the roll.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Valdez?
Yes.
Commissioner Obwali?
Yes.
And Chairman Cox?
Yes.
The motion is approved, four to zero.
That'll be our recommendation to city council. All right, we can move on to the last petition for tonight, which is for 215 Dupage Street, petition 15-25.
Okay, the final petition before you, and again, we provided the required notices on this one as well.
Thank you.
So this is the application by One11 Holdings LLC is the applicant and property owner requesting a conditional use to establish a mobile food vendor at the property commonly referred to as 215 Dupage Street. And as in previous petitions, we'll start with the general location of the subject property. So this is an approximately 8,900 square foot property in downtown Elgin, Zone CC1, Center City District. It is on the south side of Dupage Street, sort of mid-block between Spring Street on the west and Villa Street on the east. It is improved with a parking lot with 23 parking spaces. As you can see, all surrounding properties have the same shade, there's all Zone Downtown CC1. To the north are several properties, there's a one-story tattoo parlor building, there's a three-story multifamily building, and then the former Elks Lodge that's currently being renovated to a performing arts center. To the east are two properties, the one immediately adjacent to the east is a two-story mixed-use building with ground for office use and an upper-level residential unit, and then a 7,000-square-foot commercial building that is home to a motorcycle dealer. To the south, across the railroad tracks, is the Fulton Street parking deck, and then to the west is the vacant unimproved railroad right-of-way, and beyond that is the, the multi-tenant building, or actually multi-family building, the Artspace Lofts at the southeast corner of Spring and Dupage. So the applicant is the owner of the Dream Hall Food Hall at 51 South Grove, which is one block to the west, and they are requesting or proposing to have a food truck park with six mobile food vendors on the subject property. These are the photographs of the existing parking lot, the one on top left is the view from Dupage Street, and then the one in the back is kind of the view from Fulton Street. The applicant has obtained and is currently operating with a temporary use approval, that we discussed so much. They have received a temporary, temporary use approval to operate up to five mobile food trucks, and that is the layout on the left. The approval is for Thursday through Sundays from 12:00 PM to 8:00 PM. So the, the current proposal would expand that temporary use and make it more of a permanent fixture downtown. It would increase the number of food vendors from five to six. It would increase the operations from four to six days per week, from April 1st through October 31st, and daily hours of operation from 11:00 AM to 8:00 PM. The applicant is not proposing any permanent improvements. They are, however, proposing electrical upgrades and modifications to the existing electrical panel to accommodate six single-phase 240-volt outlets for those six proposed mobile food vendors. That would eliminate the need for the generators. The proposed layout, as you can see, is such that it would eliminate the one-way access through the park, so there would be no exit on the south end towards Fulton Street. And the applicant would provide daily water via the water tanks as needed. They would commission a third-party company that would be arranged to pick up and any gray water and any grease as needed. Any trash would be picked up as needed and taken to a central trash enclosure and location that is actually at the, in the back of Al's Cafe, that also serves the Dream Hall Food Hall, which is generally in this location right here, on the west side of Spring Street. The Dream Hall Food Hall would be the location where the restrooms and the dining facilities would be provided. The applicant has indicated they will designate a park steward, an individual that will walk the site as needed throughout the operations, to collect any litter and trash to make sure the property remains clean. The proposal does include the, the allowance to allow the mobile food vendors to be parked there onsite when the food truck park is not in operations. The applicant has indicated that in the future they may want to expand with additional food trucks, they were considering adding a permanent seating to the space, and then a stage for live performances. Those types of expansion will have to go through a separate zoning approval process if they decide to do so in the future. As this, as the property is located downtown Elgin, there is no parking requirement for this proposed use. The employees and visitors can use any of the public parking facilities in the downtown, that includes the Fulton Street parking deck, that includes 456 parking spaces. As is the case with previous petition, this is dependent on that text amendment petition to be approved by the city council, so the council would consider that one, the text amendment first, and if that is approved, then they would consider this one, and if that's the case, this, this application would have to satisfy the standards for conditional use. We have provided our overview of those standards, we believe that standards have been satisfied, and therefore staff recommends approval, subject to the conditions in the packet.
With that, I'm happy to ask any questions. The applicant's team is here as well, they can address the commission.
Sounds good. Commissioner Valdez, you're up.
No questions.
Commissioner Jones?
In the, in part of the packet, it mentions that they would be stored, these food trucks could be stored here over the winter as well?
That's part of the, it's unlikely that it's going to happen, but it would be included as part of this application, yes.
So just all those, it could be six to 12?
Correct. Not 12, their, the proposal is for six food trucks.
But if they're storing food trucks over the winter, would that be limited then to six?
Six, correct.
Okay. Okay. April to October. Okay, no other questions, thank you.
You're welcome.
Commissioner Obwali?
It mentions that street graphics or signs are subject to current zoning ordinances. Is that for the building that they're a part of, or the zoning that they're a part of?
So you may recall that the text amendment petition, Mr. Mylot mentioned that as part of that, so if the food, a mobile food vendor regulations are approved, as is currently contemplated, each one of the mobile food vendors would be allowed to have one A-frame graphic.
Right.
So then, if this is approved, then they would have to comply with those regulations, so that, that means each one of them would have an A-frame graphic.
Okay, thank you.
I don't have any questions for you.
Okay.
So with that, we'll invite the petitioner team to come on up.
Good evening, my name is Pat Griffin, last name G-R-I-F-F-I-N. I'm the attorney for the applicant. I think I'm going to have a limited role tonight, certainly the staff has given a comprehensive presentation, and the applicant is going to address the petition itself. I did want to note, there is one statement in opposition to the application tonight from the neighboring property owner that involves a private easement dispute, which is currently in litigation in Canton County. We're here tonight just to say our position is that that easement dispute is separate and distinct from anything that's happening tonight, but in respect to the commission, if there are any questions on that, I can answer those if and when we have those questions.
Good evening, thank you for the opportunity for us to come up. My name is Germina Vega, G-E-R-M-I-N-A, last name V-E-G-A, I do go by Mina, everybody knows me as Mina. I am the co-owner of One11 Holdings, which is the LLC that is applying for this conditional use, with the DBA of the food truck park, The Spot, on 215 Dupage Street. My partners will introduce themselves, a little bit nervous, my first time coming up here, so I'll try my best.
Yeah, I always just say, we're people, you're people, so even though we're sitting above you, don't, don't be nervous, please.
Thank you, thank you, appreciate it. So I probably called Elgin home for just 16 years, not as much as everyone else has, but I've been living here for 16 years. My husband and I do have a media production company, Studio Seven Media Production, where we do photography, videography, which is located in downtown Elgin on 51 South Grove Street. Downtown Elgin has always had been a special place for me, where I've lived for the past 16 years, where I would do my job, and I have witnessed these past 16 years, the growth of not only residential development, but restaurants, business, special events, and I'm here every day, working and invested into the community, and I'm, I'm a very proud Elgin resident. I like everything that's going on in the downtown area, especially upcoming and more, to bring more traffic in. Last August, my sister and my business partner, Yesenia Toria, and I purchased 215 Dupage Street. It's been a dream of ours for a long time to build something special together. We both have our college degrees, we both worked in corporate worlds for many years, we both have our separate businesses, and now we're coming together to have this business together. One11 Holdings is not just another business for us, there is a meaning to that name, it is tribute to our late father, who was very rooted into community unity, and he was a very passionate person when it comes to working, and some people here in the audience know who our father was and knew that he loved to work. So our goal is always to honor his legacy and create special praise to bring people together. Since taking ownership of the property, we have taken the steps needed to make it clean, safe, and up to code when it comes to ceiling, striping, and registering as a registered private parking lot. The idea of a food truck park came naturally to us, food has always been a center of our lives, we love flavor, we love different culture, and we feel that that just brings people together, and especially brings more life into the downtown area. While operating under a temporary use, which have we been doing this past couple weeks, actually gave us the opportunity to hear from the community under this special use, and we got, you know, the feedback and hopes for improvement on this conditional use. By reducing the number of trucks that we had originally proposed in the conditional use, limiting the hours of operation, improving signage, we have a partnership with Dream Hall Food Hall, that anybody can be trafficked there to use their bathrooms for their sitting area, and then people can also use of the new Dupage Court sitting area too, that has been improved and looks so much better now, so kind of give them a gateway to there. So we have proper signage, and we'll have a park attendant that will be walking around, making sure that's being done. We've heard the community as far as reducing the noise level, from going on to the generators to onsite electric. So we are committed to being responsive, to be responsible, we believe that this project contributes to the vibrant of the downtown Elgin area. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Yesenia Chavaria, that's Y-E-S-E-N-I-A, Chavaria E-C-H-E-V-A-R-R-I-A. I am co-owner of The Spot Food Truck Park. I'm also a longtime Elgin resident, Elgin business owner, and someone who has quietly worked behind the scenes the past six years to shape another business we have in downtown with my husband, The Dream Hall. Dream Hall is a food incubator, community space, that supports small businesses in downtown Elgin. I hold a bachelor's degree and previously worked at an agency focused on combating insurance fraud. There I develop a response, a respect for compliance, transparency, and public accountability. We're not outside developers, we live here, we work here, and we're fully committed to Elgin's future. I take all community concerns seriously, and I do my best to address them within the scope of what we're capable at this time. The Spot Food Truck Park was designed thoughtfully to align with the city zoning goals and the downtown mixed-use designation by reactivating underutilized space. When we took on this lot, it was previously used as an unstriped private parking lot. The area to the west by the tree line was overgrown and filled with old leaves and broken tree branches and garbage that had built up over time. We personally cleared it out, hauling away 35 yards of waste, then sealed and striped the entire lot to make it safe, clean, and usable again. This effort reflects our commitment to restoring and improving spaces in our city and not just using them. We are also a family-oriented operation, and want the space to reflect that welcoming, respectful, and never destructive to the neighborhood. We understand that any public space concerns like noise and litter are valid. At Dream Hall, I've done every kind of work, you know, wiping tables, cleaning bathrooms, picking up trash, whatever it takes to keep the space clean and inviting. This would be no different. We're not afraid to work, and we're fully intended to be good stewards of the lot. We will actively maintain the property, including trash that may blow into and around our site, even beyond our boundaries. This includes even trash not coming in from the food trucks or from our customers. This is not just a business, it's another outdoor space where family in, you know, families can enjoy together, grab a meal, and experience downtown Elgin in a welcoming and community-focused way. There is a Spanish saying that my father used to say to me, and I've kept close, and it states, donde comen dos, comen tres, which basically translates, where there's food for two, there's enough for three. I believe there's room for these small-scale food businesses to grow without taking away from others, but instead of bringing more energy, diversity, and opportunity to downtown Elgin. Some of these food trucks have their own community and/or large social following, so I truly believe this will add a new, something new to the community and to the fabric of the community. Thank you.
Hi, good evening, my name's Victor Vega, Victor, V-I-C-T-O-R, Vega, V-E-G-A, not to be confused from Pulp Fiction, Vincent Vega. I wanted to just highlight, I know, from what my wife said, and my favorite sister-in-law had mentioned, of the community reach. So I had wrote down a couple of notes here, Kevin and I spent the day in downtown Elgin gathering signatures in support of our conditional use permit. We were encouraged by the overwhelming amount of positive feedback we received from the community during our outreach. We also had the opportunity to listen to concerns from local residents and address them directly. One of the concerns, we had met with Kathy, Kathy's from the Artspace Lofts, and discussed the topic of noise concerns. That was one of the main, main ones, from the generators. That conversation helped guide us to decide, make decisions to reduce the number of food trucks from the original plan, 10, 12 food trucks originally, that we had thought to a maximum of six trucks. We also gave a tour of property and layout to one of our residents as well, one of their residents, we showed him around the lot, kind of, he also had concerns about the noise, you can tell I'm nervous, noise concern, so we had showed him around the lot and kind of brought down, minimized the concern he had, because we had plans to upgrade the, the electrical so we could reduce the noise pollution that would come from, from the trucks. In front of you, I'm not sure they had passed it out, but we had more than 20 pages of signatures and support, along with 16 individual letters of support from local signatures in support, along with 16 individual letters of support from local businesses, owners, including elected officials in the downtown, in the downtown area. Just to highlight, just a couple, we had the Illinois State Senator, Chris, Christina Castro, had also wrote a letter in support showing that it would lower the barriers to entry, generating quality jobs, and bring attracting visitors from out of town. Al's Cafe, if you are familiar with Al's Cafe, it's been here for a very long time. They had also showed support on, in the way we had handled ourselves in bringing and reducing the concerns and addressing things right away. Be unique, a restaurant owner in downtown Elgin also had written a letter in support. Again, the letters are there in front of you. The Downtown Neighborhood Association, the Explore Elgin Area Convention and Visitors Bureau, and many more. Again, there's a lot of signatures, a lot of support, and again, our goal is to try to work with the community. Again, we just want to help out. Thank you.
Thank you, and we do have copies of both the packets that you mentioned. All right, before you head back to your seats, being that you're the petitioner, we do have to offer the commission if we have questions. All right, Commissioner Obwali, why don't you go ahead and start?
No questions, thank you.
Commissioner Valdez.
Curiosity, are you guys going to have all sorts of ethnic food, or just a specific one?
That's the plan, to have different types of food. So we have established a application where, you know, the food truck vendor will apply, and we, you know, will obviously make sure that they have the required permits that they need. We'll ask for, you know, their menu, make sure they don't clash with another food truck that we do have onsite, and try to bring a variety of different items to Elgin.
Thank you.
Commissioner Jones?
Yeah, thank you. I am a big fan of food trucks. I think they bring an energy. I did, I have eaten at your park last week, and I had some safety concerns. So right now, there was only three trucks. It looked like it was marked for one way, there were very large vehicles going both ways, in and out, there, you know, it was very empty, there was not, you know, only one truck was operating. And the traffic, if it had been families and people, and there was nobody monitoring it that I could see, and they were big vehicles towing those trailers, maybe it was them, but they were coming in and out both ways. Safety is an issue. And then I didn't understand the flow, you had it like it goes through another property to get out the back? I'm not understanding how that traffic flow worked.
So the property that's there, which is the old Yamaha building, Tarek is the owner there. We have an agreement with him, he has a written agreement with the city as well, that we have permission to drive through his exit on Fulton Street. So the goal is to drive in through for only the food trucks that they can drive into the Dupage and exit to Fulton Street. We are working on to not have regular traffic to go through. People that are coming in for purchasing of foods have to park either on the parking garage or the street parking. We have flyers indicating where they can park. Being that this was really new, we're working with those safety as well to make sure that no vehicles are coming through on the lot during the operating hours.
Okay, maybe it was a bad time or something, because that was certainly not the case when I was there.
Yeah, and I would just add, during events, as shown on this plan, there is, there are barriers that will be set up at the end, showing no through traffic during those events. And I think that was in response to some of the comments that they had received earlier.
Okay. Yeah, it was a really tight squeeze. I cannot even, and like I said, there was only three, and it was tight in that space. I can't even picture it with six, if I'm being honest. I would love six, but I don't think that's feasible.
And we will love six too. Obviously, once we get the conditional use approved, we'll, we want to make sure if the six do get approved, we can have six on the lot. If that's not the case, then it is going to be six. You know, it could be five, three, two. These food truck vendors do have their own schedule as well, being part of other festivals, other events. So their schedule's going to vary as well of being on our property.
And then I'll ask you guys too about the winter storage. Do you, I don't think that would be a very attractive spot for it. I mean, maybe you'd get some winter stuff, but is there a possibility of eliminating the storage part of it?
The property is a parking lot, so, you know, we do have it facilitated to if they need to park their truck. Obviously, we're outnumber of six, but if we get other vehicles that need to park their vehicle there as well, then it'll be a vehicle, it wouldn't be just the food truck.
I mean, for storage of the six trucks over the winter?
It wouldn't be just, I don't think the case will be that we'll have six trucks on there in the wintertime. I don't see, foresee that. I see that these, because they are mobile, they do probably go back to, you know, where they reside, and only there for the operating hours. But we're just giving that as an option, that they could, you know, have their truck there. We don't own the truck, so most likely they won't keep them there.
Commissioner Jones, if I could add, as with this particular application, it's even more unique, albeit one of our first ones of these. Once the food truck court would cease operating, the use, the principal use of the property would revert back to a licensed parking lot. And when that happens, then the striped parking spaces would be allowed to have lawfully parked vehicles. So if a food truck, as a self-propelled motor vehicle, could fit in a lawful parking space, that would be a lawful use. What would not, however, would be a trailer.
Would be the trailers, okay. Thank you for that clarification.
My pleasure.
I appreciate that, thank you. I don't have anything else.
Sounds good. I think my questions have been answered, so I appreciate you coming, and despite your nervousness, you did a great job.
Thank you.
All right, as before, we will open this up to public comment. There's a, I'll say maybe 10 names signed up on here, so we'll go through those first, and then if I don't call your name, following that, we'll have you come on up. So we're going to start with Liliana Sosa.
Good evening. Like everyone, I'm kind of nervous. My name is Liliana Sosa, so L I L I A N A, last name Sosa, S O S A, and I'm coming in support of the petition, of the last petition. I lived in Elgin for the past 23 years, along with my husband, who's also sitting here. We made Elgin our home. We are proud Elgin residents, and we are also the lead pastors of our historic church in downtown Elgin, 19th Center Street, Church Dorozian, that church has been here for a while. Our previous pastor was there, our pastor for 40 years, and we started pastoring their church for the past four years. We've known Germina, or as we know her, Mina, and Yesenia for the past 23 years as well. They are women of character who always like to make an impact. They've made an impact not only to our family, but also to our community, our church. Mina's husband is one of our lead pastors at our church as well. So their focus is always to bring an impact to the community, to unify families. And when I first learned about The Spot, I was actually very excited. I'm also a fan of food trucks, because I feel that they are unique. And as church pastors of a local church, we always try to find ways to engage our church community, right, with their city. Our church is literally located in downtown Elgin on 19th Center Street, very close to where The Spot is at right now. And we always try to find ways to kind of encourage our members to get involved with the community, to visit the local restaurants, to visit the local places, and this is an opportunity for them to engage more. I feel that The Spot is going to bring a lot of different experience, right, aside from the fact that we're always indoors. I think that the fact that we can go outside and enjoy a meal outside is something that is going to attract our city residents. The fact that we're going to have unique flavors, you can order more than one thing, right? Sometimes when you go to a restaurant, you can only order one meal, but when you're in a place where there's different food trucks, you have different options, right? Sometimes we're on a run, and we might not have the time to sit at a restaurant for a long hour, you know, for a long period of time, and just having a place where we can go and grab a quick bite and go back to our work is going to allow us, right? This is going to allow us to have that, so a fast option, more than one food option at a time, and having that outdoor experience. But to me, the most important is having that space where families can unite, right? I already went to The Spot, I enjoyed ice cream, they have, they had the Chinese food, which I really enjoyed, and I went with my girls, and it was a really great experience. And I think this is something where we can encourage our families to go to, and I'm looking forward not to have this on a temporary basis, but more of a permanent basis, right? And just to go downtown, go to the trucks, is a great experience, and that's it for me. Thank you.
Thank you. Kimberly Startov at 51 South Spring. All right, Haley Hugenberg from 51 South.
Hello, my name is H A L I E, L E I G H, that's what I usually go by. My last name is H U G E N B E R G. I live at 51 South Spring Street, Unit 216, in the Elgin Artspace Lofts. I've lived there since January of 2021, and I'm here tonight to share some concerns that I do have about the new food truck lot. It's approximately 25 feet from my building, and my windows and several other residents' windows directly face it. Since it's opened, the generators have been running, that noise is very constant. It's very loud, they produce smog, and it's changed how I live in my apartment. I can't open my windows because of the noise, because of the smog. Last night, they were running until 10 o'clock PM, outside of the posted business hours of 8 o'clock PM. I do understand they are going to, planning to upgrade that grid, but I do want to know when that's going to happen. Perhaps a deadline could be proposed, you know, if more food trucks are eventually added. It sounds like there's five right now. I read in the original proposal, there was going up to eight, but it sounds like now they're just going to be doing six. But depending on whatever they're going to add, you know, will they upgrade the grid to accommodate that as they add more food trucks? Privacy has also been impacted. There is a thin tree line along the green belt that separates Springs, that Spring Street Apartments, but it provides very little buffer. I can clearly see the food trucks and people coming through that lot. You know, there's steady food traffic that's just outside our windows. You know, it used to be, feel like a little more private, and we're losing that. Trash is another concern. That green belt between that lot and apartments, that already collects litter. You mentioned there's some sort of ownership dispute, so it'd be nice to hear some clarity on that. But with this daily food truck traffic, this will likely worsen. You know, unlike restaurants with enclosed dining, you know, food truck lots, they're open, and trash can spill into surrounding areas. I do understand they're going to walk the lot and check for trash, but I just do have concerns about spillover for trash. I did read in the original proposal that they were going to add some live music. Will that be daily? Will that be all day? Will they play amplified or recorded music through speakers? I didn't sign up to live next door to a music venue, and I just, you know, want to be able to, you know, rest, work from home, and live peacefully. I do want to say this, this is a great idea. Like, you know, no one's against economic diversity and business growth, but I do want to say, I don't know if this is a great location, you know, but if this do, if you do proceed with this, I do want you to consider the following actions. And this kind of runs adjacently to that text amendment, but I just want to state, you know, my thoughts as well. Requiring food trucks to use grid power or silent, non-pulling alternatives to generators, installing a wall, maybe a high privacy fence or wall, especially along the side facing the Spring Street Apartments, and setting clear and conservative limits on music volume and hours for live performers and/or speaker systems, and really maintaining the trash to prevent buildup of trash, especially in that green belt. I've seen, I know what they're talking about when they said that they tried to clean it up, so I'm so appreciative of that. I just have concerns with that building up again. Yeah, I just want to mention too, I do understand Kevin Etchevara is the business manager of this operation, and he's also a commissioner. Am I correct in that? Okay. I mean no disrespect, I think that is kind of a conflict of interest. Perhaps there is no rule regarding that, but I just hope that this application is going to be treated with equal scrutiny as others. Thank you so much for your time, I do appreciate all that you do.
Thank you. Juan Cardenas.
Hello. Good evening. Right, is that map still good?
Yes, you're good.
My name is Juan Cardenas, J U A N C A R D E N A S. You do get nervous when you get up here, right? I lived in Elgin my whole life. Recently, I moved out to Hampshire, only because it was a great opportunity, but I have an investment property here in Elgin. Future goal is to be a realtor in the city of Elgin, to, you know, invest more in Elgin. So I love the city, saw me grow up, and it made me who I am with the community. It's a great community here, it's great diverse, it's great people, and there's great food. And that's one of the reasons why I'm the size I am, because I love to eat, right? And so this spot will bring diversity, will bring culture to it. I don't know about you, but I love to eat more than just tacos, right? I love ice cream, I love all type. And that's what food trucks bring to a city. I visit Orlando a lot normally, and my favorite place to visit is called Food Trucks, World Food Trucks. If you Google it, it is like 30 food trucks in one location. When you look around in that place, you see so many different faces, you see so many businesses, and nobody's competing. Everybody's having a great time, everybody's making money, and everybody's eating, right? And I think that something like this in the city of Elgin will bring just that. I'll be honest with you, I've never woken up in the morning and said, hey, I want to go eat downtown Elgin. It's just not there. There's Jimmy John's, there's a few places that are good for dinner, but there's nothing that, when you're running around, or you're coming out of the gym, or you're, you know, hanging out with your friends, that you can go without feeling uncomfortable because you're wearing shorts or you're in flip-flops, that you can just walk in and pay. And this is one of those places that's going to create culture. You're going to see people coming out of businesses, you're going to see people coming out for lunch, you're going to see people coming out when they're just hanging out in the city. And it's cost-efficient. Sometimes, you know, I tell my wife, we're never going to go out to eat if we can't tip 20%. I just feel like we should honor everybody everywhere you go, right? At this case, you save that 20%, and you're allowed yourself to get maybe an extra hot dog, and I like two hot dogs when I go eat. So it's just a great opportunity. I know Mina personally, and I know Yesenia from dealing with them. They actually were the photographers at my wedding, which, you know, I don't know how they made it possible, they made me look good, okay? And they're great people, right? I also am the treasurer at my church. My church serves here in Elgin, around 651 Lily Street, right? And treasury, you do a lot of stuff behind scenes, and you got to be trustworthy, right? Not everybody's easy to touch money and not, and just to be able to be okay with it. But I like to associate people that are trustworthy, and Mina, Victor, and Yesenia have those characters, have those qualities in them. So I believe that if, you know, they're allowed this to be more of a, not temporary, but allow it to be an everyday use and something to bring to the city, they would treat it with all that respect that they have said they would. So thank you for your time, God bless you.
Thank you, and I believe you overcame your nervousness very well. All right, Mr. James Harvey. Oh, he was sitting here, just missed him. I believe the next person as well, Alyssa, I think you crossed her bedtime. No last name. Then we've got Aaron Reinke.
Good evening, my name is Aaron Reinke, A A R O N R E I N K E. My address is 1250 Larkin Avenue here in sunny Elgin, Illinois, and I'm one of the attorneys that represents Mr. Burna. And I wanted to, no, you have a written objection for Mr. Burna. You've heard a little bit about the easement dispute. I wanted to underscore, maybe distill some of the legal issues. I wanted to underscore, maybe distill some of the legal issues involved. If you wouldn't mind putting up, I think slide 11 is probably the one that we'd wanna take a look at? Because I know there's a lot of facts and exhibits and things like that, but I just, I wanted to distill it, and I promise I won't take too much of your time. So backstory is that Mr. Burner acquired this property at 221 Dupage Street in 1995. And so I'll talk about the building as, or I'll refer to it as 221. At the time, the parking area that is the subject of today's petition, the subject property, was actually a part of that 221 Dupage property. And that bar, that parking area has underground storage tanks. And those underground storage tanks were abandoned improperly. They were not done in accordance with law. So Mr. Burner elected as a solution to not take title to the parking lot, but instead negotiated easement rights over the parking lot. And the city required that he obtained those easement rights as a condition of every single permit that he secured to renovate the building at 221. So in the one instance, the city's requiring these easements, and now the city's entertaining essentially approval of a site plan that will destroy those easements, because Mr. Burner won't be able to, to park his vehicles, have handicap parking. There is a utility easement that's depicted on that figure, and all of that will be interfered with by the proposed use. And, and we have in fact filed a lawsuit in Kane County that's pending, and we hope that will be resolved relatively soon, but you know how the, the legal process is. So rather than approve all of this, we would, we would request that you deny the petition, or you table it until the litigation is resolved, and the petitioner's ability to even use some of this land, like in the red area and in the yellow area up there, is resolved by the court system. So thank you very much. And now you'll hear from Mr. Burner.
Well, he is next on the list, so I'll allow that. Yes, yes, we'll certainly pause for you.
My name is Greg Burner. I just wanted to point out a couple additional things that are happening with the current temporary use. It is very tight, and this drawing here on the lower corner here shows that, that the trucks are really not even on the property, they're over the property line. The, the drawings that have been displayed before are not to scale. If you look at it closely, the, the vehicles don't even fit into the parking stalls that are laid over it. And so it is very tight, and six would be very tight and unsafe. But more importantly, this is an accessory parking to 221. It is not an individual parking lot. It is not, you know, able to have these food trucks there or parking there that isn't part of 221 Dupage. The upper level is driveway easement and vehicle circulation, which is part of the requirements for the city, that commercial vehicles like garbage trucks and delivery trucks and stuff on a regular basis can come into the lot, turn around, and do, pick up and deliver at the, at the docks, and go back out, which is the garage doors, and go back out without backing out on the street, which is a requirement of the city. And the parking as well, there's five stalls at least, and the handicap spots in blue. So I just wanted to describe, define that area, and the same in the area below. And there is not room for the parking that is striped. They do not meet the code as well. Could I see the next slide, please? So here is the parking situation as it is now. You have trees that are touching the tops of the roofs where the ventilation for the fume hoods are, which are, can be flammable because of the grease laden vapors. And the vehicle on the, on these two pictures here is my tenant trying to move out of the residential.
Can you get the mic, please? Into the microphone, please.
Oh, I'm sorry. So the two vehicle, the vehicles that you see in white there, they're backing up from the, my tenant, right up to the, to the trailer, and that's with the barricade not even put out as it was. There was no barricades used in these pictures. There's extension cords on the ground that are tripping hazards. There's circulation issues, definitely. They're using it as an active parking lot as well as the food trucks. And this situation isn't just happening with my tenants, but with other cars that are parked in there. And then you can see that there's a lady with a small child that's trying to exit because there really is one in and one out of this property. And if we are, if there's a written agreement, that's great, but it's not the same as an easement, which is a legal document that is for perpetuity. The lower picture, the lower pictures are for showing a vehicle backing in, one of the food trucks backing in on Sunday night at 1:00 AM, and they backing in off the street, which commercial vehicles are, are not to do, and it's 1:00 AM. So the operation of these food trucks, because they're mobile, and as everyone has mentioned, they're moving around all the time, or as the red one that hasn't been used at all has been sitting there the whole time, isn't just the hours of operation. So they're coming in from another building or another venue, and then parking there, and it's coming in at 1:00 AM in the morning. You can see the windows where the arrows are pointing of next door, and there is actually on all sides of residence of this property. There's some across the street, which was mentioned, there's the art space, and then there's the residence where these pictures were taken, that are literally five feet from, from the action, 25 feet on the other side, and then 66 feet across. And the requirement for a food truck, just a temporary food truck to be set up, is 100 feet from a residential district, not even a resident. So this really is not the spot to be used for this food venue. And we have Dupage Court literally 100 feet down that was just made, that would be, is a beautiful spot where they are using outdoor seating, and their dream hall is using outdoor seating there. So they, they've been given a beautiful platform for outdoor seating, and this is really a tight, tight and has buildings on all three sides. There's really not any wind or ventilation, natural ventilation, because of the buildings being on all three sides. This is not safe, and it's a concern that all three residents are on all three sides. The city has less control because this is on private property, and this lot is just too small. The trailers are leaving and coming back and, and not opening up at all. The Fourth of July, very little customers, and drew very little attention. And they, they're using this as a, as a depot for their food trucks. They're not going back to their designated areas. They're just sitting here and being stored. And these vendors are not just individual food truck. They're part of a vending company, it looks like. They're not entrepreneurs that are doing, doing just this one van or this one vehicle. They have multiple vehicles, and this is a franchise or a larger group. And the one trailer that is there is actually from a restaurant in St. Charles. So we're literally making room for them to profit in Elgin without investing in Elgin. They can come here and utilize the, their trailer, but the revenue is going to St. And as I said, they are doing some trailer maintenance outside, re-converting some things or something they were working on, on the trailers outside. And they are sitting more than they are actually being used, and it is just basic storage in downtown Elgin for commercial vehicles, which is not allowed. They are a nuisance, not only from the noise, but also from light pollution. They, they turned on the lights when they got back at 10 o'clock the other night, and were doing something. They're, they're using leaf blowers to blow the, the trash off into the lot next door, and they're on, like I said, encroaching on the lot next door as well. It is kind of an insult that they're taking their food and their, going, and for washrooms, you have to literally walk right in front of aisles through their outdoor seating for washrooms, when they've been struggling to be down there as one of the only restaurants on Dupage Street for decades. And they've been selling ice cream here as well, soft-serve ice cream, which is definitely, as, as they said, a clash with the, with another vendor. It's definitely a clash with the brick and mortar restaurants. So we really suggest that this not be approved today, that this is a, it should be tabled because this is, basically, there are easements over this whole property. And this, the food trucks are sitting right on it. They just, there's no room for, it covers the whole site. So we really have to get the legal situation of who's, who has the rights to park there resolved before this can continue and be a permanent, permanent use. So again, if they're utilizing a written agreement for exiting out the back, then why aren't they recognizing the legal easements? Thank you.
Thank you. All right. I've exhausted the sign-in sheets. Is there anyone else in the audience who didn't sign up but wants to speak on this petition? You know what? Chris, I did, I skipped you, I apologize. I see your name there.
Can you leave the presentation on, actually? Because there are so many pictures of my business over there, I might use some of them. So again, my, my name is Chris Nowicki, and I represent two of four food trucks that are there on this parking lot. My two food trucks are, first of it is Polish Shack, which is Polish street food, and second is mentioned Ice Cream Truck. First of all, I would like to say that we are no competition to anybody else, because our product is very unique. It's approved by FDA, imported from Poland by one of the oldest importing companies in United States of America that import all commodities from, from Poland, from Europe, from Germany, from Netherlands. And I am associated with that company myself. Also, we are not anyhow a franchise. I'm a single owner of both of them. I know that other owners are also single owners. We are not franchise. We don't spend, this is true, correct statement, I am not resident of Elgin, I am resident of South Elgin, which, I live just six minutes away from here, on the border of Elgin and South Elgin. However, all our sales tax goes to Elgin, because I pay sales tax wherever I'm selling. So my point of sale system does all the accounting for me, and I pay taxes in Elgin. I wanted to also say, I apologize to anybody who, that was my truck on the picture backing up at 1:00 AM, totally my bad, because I got a flat tire on the way from the event, and I'm sorry, I couldn't just make it up earlier. I apologize if I, if I made any noise at that time. This was only one-time accident, and it never happened again. And it will never happen, it, it didn't happen before, and it won't happen again. I also wanted to mention about other pictures with some power cords. These were taken out of context. This was the first day of operation. We didn't have access to power supply, which we already have, which also is not a true statement. Exactly that picture of the right. This is first day of our operation, and we had not yet access to the power, which right now we have to all of our trailers. Yeah, I only wanted to also add that I actually had prepared speech. I'm not sure if my phone didn't die yet, because it was taking so long to, to actually have it. If you may, I'll just read it, so it's, it's quicker. My name is Chris Nowicki, and I'm the proud owner of the local two food trucks, The Dessert Flirt, where we serve handcrafted soft-serve waffles and fun desserts, and Polish Shack, which brings authentic Polish street food, like pierogies, sausage, and potato pancakes to events and neighborhoods in West Chicago, Antaria. I'm here tonight, not just as a business owner, but as someone who genuinely believes in the power of food to bring people together. I'm here to speak in strong support of the proposed food truck park, because I know what it means to take a dream, put it on wheels, and work day and night to share it with the community. Food trucks like mine often start with a single family, a single recipe, a single hope. We don't have investors or storefronts. What we have is passion, work ethic, and deep desire to be part of something bigger. And a food truck park gives us that chance. It gives families a place to gather without the high cost of dining out. It gives small businesses a fighting chance to grow and be discovered. It gives the village a new attraction that reflects creativity, diversity, and local pride. I have served thousands of happy customers, from kids on bikes to grandparents, living old tastes. And believe me, you have a lot of Polish community here, like third, fourth generation. I've since, I've seen friendships form in line, I've seen people come back week after week because it feels like their place. A food truck park is not just about convenience or food options. It's about activating underutilized space. It's about creating a hub where people want to be. It's about economic development without the high infrastructure cost of traditional retail. Trucks like mine, or I should say trailers, hire local workers, buy local ingredients, and pay taxes locally. We participate in festivals, donate to schools, and support each other. Here we provide support to a couple of churches, and we still didn't give, we weren't being, given a chance yet to do it in Elgin, but we do it outside of Elgin, and we hope that some of the churches we, we contacted will also try to, to follow up with us. So we are not in, the word you couldn't say before?
Nuisance?
Exactly. I cannot pronounce it, I'm sorry.
No, it's all right. I practiced it before, so you got it now.
We are a network of hardworking individuals trying to build something positive and lasting. I understand the concerns, noise, trust, traffic, but those can be addressed with clear rules, proper layout, and respectful vendors. Many towns across Chicagoan have embraced food truck parks successfully, and results speaks for themselves, safer public spaces, more tourism, and revitalized neighborhoods. For me personally, this food truck park isn't just about having a place to park and serve. It's a chance to expand, create jobs, maybe even one day, open a brick and mortar location right here in Elgin. It's a stepping stone, not just for me, but for dozens of other passionate entrepreneurs who want to contribute to this local economy. And I will leave last paragraph, because I said it before. So... So thank you very much, and I hope you will vote yes on that.
Thank you. Anyone else in the audience?
Hi, I'm Nicole Prokop again, N-I-C-O-L-E-P-R-O-K-O-P. So as I stated previously, I do live at the Art Space Art Lofts at 51 South Spring Street. I will refrain from saying my apartment number, but I will say that I think the points that another one of the residents, Lee, had stated earlier, I think it, they had prepared a speech that I wish I had time and the effort to prepare. Because I know that from where they live, it's, as a whole, I love this idea. I think this is great. I think this could become, this could create Elgin to become something bigger than it is now. I love the diversity in the food, the initiatives that it's taking to get more people to shop locally. I know that's a big initiative. I just don't think it's fair to plop a food truck park 25 feet from our building when there's light pollution, there's noise pollution. It doesn't seem like there's much regulation yet on what is considered nuisances, how those are going to be handled. I honestly wish that more people from our building could have attended here today. I know that a couple of them who were here had to leave because, like Kim, who was sitting in front of me, she said that she had to wake up at 4:30 for work. So she had to leave. But I think the biggest kind of thing swaying me towards a no for this specific area is just that I live here. And I enjoy living where I live. And I know that the community of Elgin Art Space Art Lofts is so interconnected. And everyone else loves the community that we've built up from inside to make the building what it is. Because at the end of the day, you could say it's just an apartment building, but it's a community of local artists that are low-income, that make it what it is. And I feel like I could feel differently towards this initiative if I thought that I could just move somewhere else. If things became too loud or too disruptive, if I was waking up at 4:30 in the morning hearing food trucks or something, or people still gathered around, I'd say, all right, let me just move. I can't because it's a low-income association. At the time being, I work a full-time, a part-time job, and I do Instacart and DoorDash. I can't just move because things get too loud. I'll just have to deal with it. And I know that some of the residents that live at my community or in Art Space Art Lofts are retired, so they can't just add on another stream of income to move somewhere else because they live there because their social security checks don't cover cost of living anywhere else. And I don't think it's fair to have the food truck lot 25 feet from their house where they can't open their blinds because people are constantly walking through, where they can't open their windows because of the smog. And that pertains to me as well. I won't say where in the unit that I live, but when I have my windows open, I could hear it. I open my balcony to put my laundry outside because I don't want to run my dryer because it runs my electricity up. So that, just that sort of stuff, where these little things add up to the people in the community. And as much as I love this initiative, I just wish it was further from residential area. I saw on the map, there was a really nice aerial view of the food truck park where it showed Villa Street and then a little bit of Fulton Street. That corner, there's a parking lot, and there's a truck up there. It used to be the side street truck. So when I first got the letter saying that there was going to be a food truck lot, me and my partner were both excited because we thought that's where it was going to be. And then, understanding that it wasn't going to be there, made us instantly scared and just more uninterested. So like I said, I wish some more members of our community could have came out today. But the reality is that we are just trying to stay afloat, and a lot of us can't stay until, oh, 10:30. So I think that's all I have to say. I'm pretty brain-dead at this point, but I just wish this was shelved, not for the long term, because I, listening to the people's stories, I do want this to work, and I do want local businesses to thrive, but I just don't want it to impact the residents and the people in my tight-knit community. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else in the audience who wasn't on the signup list but is here to speak on this petition?
All right, seeing none. We have a couple of questions that the petitioner may want to address, but I guess I wanted to look to city staff for a couple of things first. How do we understand the difference, is this says operations to 8:00 PM, but perhaps some of these might stay open later to clean? Or, like, how do we, within an interior building, we considered a banquet hall in Big Timber recently where they straight-up said cars are going to be in the parking lot till this time because the cleaning people come back? And it was just kind of part of our conversation with this being more open to the environment. What's the city's position on operations till 8:00 PM? In my mind, that means sales up to 8:00 PM and then normal kind of-
A reasonable time thereafter to disassemble, put stuff away, clean up.
Right.
That's our understanding as well.
Okay. So it's a reasonable time, all right. As I understand from the staff packet, the live music in stage and all that is a potential future add, which would require the petitioner to come back to this commission.
That is exactly right. So that was the initial proposal, thought that this would include both phases. They've since then scaled that back, so now what's in front of you is just, you know, phase one with six food trucks. If they ever want to expand that, add live music, on-premise seating or anything else that would require another application for conditional use?
Okay. What is your, I'll call it, opinion on the property dispute process as it relates to our consideration tonight?
That is a private contractual matter between two property owners and is not at issue.
Thank you. My last question for you is, what is your comment on the accuracy of the petitioner's site plan drawing? It appears that it was drawn by the petitioner, not a civil engineer or someone else, and I know the veracity was called into question. So to me, it's not to pick on the drawing as much as, again, understanding the city's process to kind of vet that as we go forward, to kind of say, hey, we're not occupying adjacent properties or setback issues or those kinds of things. So how would you respond to how that would be dealt with going forward?
So because these food trucks may change, we were not so concerned about the scale of the orange rectangles on the plan, but we were concerned about the width of the access aisles or drive aisles for vehicles to come in and out. If that ultimately ends up being no longer a one-way traffic through the parking lot as it is currently, and it's going to have to become a turnaround or a parking lot that has two-way access, it's going to be on the applicant to make sure that they maintain that, depending on the size of the food trucks. As you can see, they've indicated the minimum width that currently exists with the parking lot, that between the existing parking spaces and the corner of that property that's to 21 East or DuPage Street, that needs to be maintained, the 22 feet needs to be maintained. And I think that's kind of was attempted to be shown there. At the end of the day, these barricades may not be there, the benches may not be there. We made sure that none of those things are permanent improvements. If this easement stays or is not modified, at the end of the day, none of this is permanent. Essentially, these are items that can be moved around, just like cars. So that's the way we've analyzed this layout.
And there was some conversation about, I appreciate Commissioner Jones's commentary about cars moving in and out and earlier observations that it was intended for one-way traffic. The, there's an intent to modify the site plan from the current site plan that was approved for the temporary use versus what would eventually be implemented for the conditional use. And I don't know how well we as staff may have articulated that. The property owner now has permission from the adjacent property owner to have one-way traffic through, under the temporary use. That is not the intent for the conditional use. What the intent is for the conditional use is to provide the current parking configurations and provide Mr. Burna with five parking spaces and access to the handicap spaces. And so though, that's what this site plan maintains, and it does not contemplate through traffic, as the applicant alluded to in their testimony earlier. Did I make it more confusing?
So no cars during conditional?
Correct.
Right now, so right now, they're still on their temp permit?
Yes, ma'am.
But when they are open, there would be no vehicle traffic going through there?
It is not their intent to have any customers come onto the premises.
And those cars you mentioned that you allocated, the five spaces and the handicap, that's out in conditional?
That is, that is the applicant's intention to honor an agreement, an arrangement, an easement, with Mr. Burna and provide those five parking spaces. They are the three up against the east lot line, and the two immediately north of his property. I'll try to highlight these here. Give me one second.
At the same time, it was mentioned that the tenants are currently using that space now, correct? Burna's tenants?
Yes. That's my understanding, is that there are, that it's part of those five spaces. Yes. So as we worked with the applicant to bring forward an application for you, recognizing that was their intent to do that, we had to ensure that there was appropriately sized parking spaces, appropriately sized access aisles, and ingress and egress, and that was simply, the way in which the traffic was intended currently under the temporary use, no longer worked. And so on the left side, you see, under current temporary use, you see a through movement, intended at least. From here down through here. And then under the conditional use, this red line is their intended barricades right here with the access to the parking space. These accesses here and up there. So I hope that helps clarify the, at least what's being requested.
It's worth noting that the parking lot has non-conforming drive aisle widths, as it currently stands. And so the intent of the current, to be approved layout for conditional use, is that those existing non-conforming widths of parking lot drive aisles are no further reduced. So that whatever the existing drive aisle width is, they cannot reduce that less than that for the five parking spaces that have to be maintained.
Less than what?
Whatever the width of those existing drive aisles are, they, you know, the access to the parking spaces in the back has to be maintained through those existing drive aisles, the widths of those drive aisles.
To use your typical term, it's lawful non-conforming, I think? Okay, all right. So you're not making the condition work worse by having these improvements?
Correct.
Understood, all right. The other questions, I think actually the petitioner's packet addressed about trash prevention, and then, you know, there's a suggestion about a privacy fence and wall, but when we're changing from generators to permanent power, a lot of the noise, it seems like that's currently there, will be mitigated as well. I didn't have any other notes. So in my opinion, I don't believe a petitioner response would be required, so I would say that-
Does everybody ask?
I can certainly do that for questions for staff. Sure, I'll start with my left Commissioner Aboli, questions for staff.
Just to clarify what you were just talking about, did they, are they there? Is the electricity already done? Because one of the food truck vendors mentioned that it is, but then they said they're going to be working on it. We don't know.
It's my understanding that the permanent electrical installations have not yet been made.
Okay.
What the person who spoke to you earlier may have been talking about was a more direct generator hookup. But that would require, to do the electrical hookups would require an electrical permit, and that's not been issued.
One other thing to mention is that currently there are two trucks in operations, whereas the proposal is for six total. So the existing electrical panels on-site may be adequate for one or two of those food trucks. And so, but then additional upgrades may be needed for additional food trucks.
Right, which is why I know there was a question about the generator and timing, another thing I wasn't going to get into, I don't think, it's, we understand what the end goal is, we understand what it is now. The timing of all that is up to ComEd and the city and their engineers and all those things for review process, so.
But at the same time, it is important because are we going to have six generators running at one time when we open? So that may influence our decision. If they have an idea of timing, I would like to know what it is.
Okay, well, we can bring the petitioner back for that. All right?
Yeah.
Any other questions that we can, when we bring them back up, that we can make a good list?
Yeah, sounds good to me.
I'm trying to stay away from the easement thing as much as possible, so, I mean, I get it, I definitely do, but, you know, there was storage tanks mentioned. Is there any concern on that? Or is that just a, you know, who cares what's under there type thing?
You're referring to the propane tanks that they may use as part of their operation?
No.
The suggestion that there's underground storage tanks?
Oh, oh, that's part of the former gas station. Now you mention it. That, all of this is surface uses? Nothing is underground uses? There's no, so whatever's underground is underground. is underground. And nobody's proposing to disturb the ground.
Do you know, again, try not to get into the personal legal stuff, but was this property purchased from another private property, another private party when it was? So the original easement was with that property?
Well, as the applicant, or excuse me, Mr. Burna and his attorney indicated, both the 221 East Chicago, the building that Mr. Burna currently owns, and the parking lot were both sort of one property. They were owned by the former Elks Lodge. And so when Mr. Burna decided to purchase the property, they decided to only purchase the building, 221 East, excuse me, DuPage Street, and not the parking lot, with, as they indicated, with the understanding that they can get the easements over that parking lot so they can access the property. And that was then executed. And so they only purchased the building and Elks Lodge maintained the parking lot until the applicant ultimately purchased the parking lot.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Jones, since you requested the opportunity, here you go.
Just one real point, there was an intervening property owner at the time between the Elks Lodge and ultimately the applicant.
Yeah. So, yeah, I wanted to ask about fencing along the railroad right of way there. I think that would, those are windows right into their living spaces that overlook that space. So I guess it's more for the applicant. And then somebody mentioned in the public comments that there's a hundred foot, there's something, somebody mentioned there should, food trucks shouldn't be within 100 feet of a residential community. Is that a different zoning for different communities or different?
Sure, under a temporary use, no temporary use can be within 100 feet of a residence conservation district or residence district. It's not the land use, it's the zoning district.
Okay, okay. And I do, I don't know what the solution is, but I do think it's very limiting to have it on private property with no complimentary use somewhere else, you know, in the city of Elgin. And I worry that four responding businesses, restaurant businesses, I was pleasantly surprised to hear that there are 40 restaurants. So that was great, but four responding, I just, that doesn't feel like a survey or input or data to me. So I'd be curious to hear from, you know, more of that a little bit. And then the hours of operation are kind of a concern if they're, with that close to the residential and to an existing business already on site, if they're not following. And I know, you know, rumor around town is that Saturdays and Sundays are free game. After five, Saturdays and Sundays are free game for doing whatever you want in the city of Elgin. So I'm just gonna, I hope that there will be some follow-up and some confirmation that all of the things within the packet are being followed. Thank you.
So Commissioner Jones, we've done this before, that if this goes forward to city council, we've made it a condition that additional data would be provided to city council if we decide to, if we don't decide to table it to get the information ourselves, we, a lot of times we add that as a condition that going forward to city council, petitioner needs to find out, or DNA could provide more information whether we're only four or what a greater sample could be. So maybe that would be something we would consider.
And unfortunately, you know, I did not read everything that was handed to us tonight. We had a 300 and some page. So I'm sure that there's wonderful letters in there and everything, but I know documents were included in our packet that were dated July 2nd. So, yeah, July 2nd was some of the dates on there. So I appreciate your efforts to get them in. But having this here on the dais just doesn't give us an opportunity to look at any of that. So just an observation.
And just an observation, that's not up to staff? That's the stuff that we received this afternoon. And we efforted extremely hard to get that stuff in your hands up to the last. And Chairman Cox noticed that everything was kind of running late right before the meeting, just to get everything in your hands.
Yeah, I appreciate that. I appreciate that. But it puts us behind, I just, we get here five minutes early and we can't read another 50 pages in five minutes. So I just, maybe that is an indication that work still needs to be put into this application. I don't know. But I do appreciate your efforts to get the information to us. I know how hard you work on that. Thank you.
Yeah, my support, as you mentioned about staff's work is always there. I actually was thinking, if I was a commissioner, I would have made a motion to table this based on receiving last-minute information. But since I'm the chair, I typically don't do that. But that would be a comment for the process in general, not for you guys.
Right. It's a balancing act, you know? Our effort is to try and get as much information to you as fast as possible and to not let the process in and of itself cause any unnecessary delays. But at the same time, the opportunity to fully digest the information that's presented to you five minutes before is difficult. I understand that.
As it is for you, if you received it this afternoon. Commissioner Valdez.
My question will be for the petitioners. Can I still ask them or no?
We can certainly do that. He said off the mic that his question is for the petitioner.
And I wanted to know if I was allowed to do that or not. Okay. So, yeah, the operation hours are going to be Thursday through Sunday, 11:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m., correct?
We'll have them come up and respond to somebody, so.
But the other question is, what is the plan for the rest of the week?
As far as the food trucks, what they will do, they go, either if they have on their agreement that they leave their truck there, they'll leave their truck there, or they go off to other event that they have. As far as, you know, it'll run as a parking lot throughout the other days.
Well, the hours, I just wanted to verify, 11:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m.?
Yeah, so the hours of that is that we are going to enforce right now, obviously we're running under that special use. And it's kind of like a stress test that we're kind of doing. So once we get the conditional use, we'll implement and be more stern with the times of, you know, cutting down around 7:15, 7:30, the food trucks need to start, you know, weighing down. And then by 8 o'clock, by 8:30 initially, to have, you know, if at that moment, have all the lights and, you know, fully closed.
Okay, all right. One of the questions Commissioner Aboli asked was about the intended development timing, when you'd go from generators to the powered-by-the-grid, which I think was part of staff's comment.
Yeah, so on that, we do have meters on the parking lot. So once this conditional use gets approved, it's an investment that we're going to make to get those electric ports done. You know, so we'll have to contact the contractor, get those installed. But as running at that special use unit right now, we do have the generators, but we see to invest to get that permanently done, the electricity.
Do you have an approximate time for that?
Not approximate time. I would say, once we get this approved, then we'll start sending out biddings, as it's called, to the electricity companies to get amounts of how much it's going to cost to get that done. So we already have a estimated one. It's an investment of about $20,000. So that's already in the works.
That answer your question?
Is that all right?
To my understanding, just to bring clarity again, it looks like we do have an electrical permit into the city already. It's just a matter of that process, and it may be up to a month to get everything rolling and the investment that Mina mentioned, the possible $20,000 for that upgrade. But we do have a permit submitted already, or application.
I have a follow-up question. It seems to me that you guys are, you know, really trying to do everything that you can to kind of do the right things and listen to people and make the right decisions. Food trucks promote diversity and inclusion and culture and so many exciting things. The question is, obviously, there is some community concern on a couple of different levels. If approved today, would you, do you have a plan now after tonight? Or do you have some kind of community outreach plan for the residents of the art space, for the 36 restaurants that didn't respond? Is it on your mind? Or would you be willing to do some more community outreach?
Yeah, so I know it was last minute submitted to you guys, the letters on there. There are several restaurants that did write about, you know, approving on this. So there are several restaurants on there as well.
I did actually read them all. I got here a little early and read them. But, so is that a no then? Because you've already done that?
No, I just want to say, there's not only four that the DNA had that meeting with, that there is more. And yes, we are willing to work more with the community as being a partnership with Dream Hall and Food Hall. We know there's a lot of community that goes in there, a lot of feedback they will receive from clients that go, customers that go there on a daily basis. So more than willing to address those.
Okay, thank you.
All right. I get, the last thing that I had on here was about a fencing and wall, but I kind of questioned the efficacy of that being that we're adjacent to a two-story building. You'd have to build a wall that's the same height to have a sound reduction benefit for that, I believe. Staff wants to comment on that, or?
Well, we did contact the real world company, the one that has that green space there. So that's owned by the Union Pacific. So we do have already a started conversation with them to see how we can utilize that space as well. And maybe in the future, knowing these concerns, provide some sort of privacy for the residents in the building.
But that would be on a future petitioner effectively?
Yes, yeah. But we do have conversations with them.
All right, any other questions for the petitioner? All right, thank you. Is always giving staff final opportunity to bring anything to light or make any final comments?
Put this in between us so we may share. It seems that there's an opportunity to further amend some of the conditions if the Planning and Zoning Commission was inclined in that way. And kind of the notes that I jotted down was perhaps a half hour or hour after operations to allow for cleanup so that there was a set time period, so that there's not any discrepancy between what is or isn't expected. And from our perspective, if there was direction or a request for some form of further outreach, respectfully, I would ask what that, what form would that take? In the interests of recognizing how long we've worked together, it was our attempt in the outreach to more than 40 restaurants and bars in the downtown to solicit that. And if they don't come and make that observation, I don't know what more we could necessarily do. There was additional supplementary material, albeit at the last minute, provided by the applicant. And so if a five-minute recess to look through that might help, or very specific direction in terms of what you want so that we ensure we provide that to city council going forward would be appreciated.
I assume that, when I said it, I think I was going off of the trust method, that at least tell them that they should be doing this and, you know, going from there. But if my fellow commissioners have another way of doing it, yeah, definitely, I'd be open to that.
Or along those lines, depending upon what the recommendation of this body is, is to ask DNA to do that continued outreach to those 40-plus establishments and keep them abreast of what's going on with this particular petition.
Commissioner Jones, did you have thoughts?
Maybe a different entity should be reaching out to the businesses. Maybe the city should do a survey and maybe just to, more than just the downtown, because this is an impact that is more than the downtown. And I would be curious, because I, and I don't know what this is, but like I said, four, I'm happy they didn't have opposition. I don't know what that looks like to do some sort of survey. I know nobody participates in a whole lot of anything, but if, you know, I don't know if they would participate, but maybe a different point of contact would be beneficial, if they're not getting response from some of them.
So to Mr. Mylot's point, do we have, are we going to add a condition or a recommendation? And if we are, can we kind of figure out what that would be? Or are we just going to move on and do the trust method? I think is what he's looking for some direction so we're not having him on a...
What does tabling the item entail?
Comes back next month.
The option of discussion, is that between us or are we discussing right now for the conditions?
You are welcome to include us. We're happy to help as much as we can, or you're welcome to discuss amongst yourselves.
Right. Yeah, that's an open-air discussion.
Call on us if we can help.
Right. I mean, the fact that you kind of helped us write a fourth condition already is appreciated.
I mean, if we're getting an extra 50, 60 pages on the day of the application, of the petitioner's presentation, do you think we should allow time to absorb, allow the staff to absorb this, allow those questions to sink in? I'm not sure.
I can't answer that question for you. That's up to each individual commissioner to make sure that you have the information you feel you need to vote on whatever motion is put forth.
I guess as chair, I can just do a quick poll, if that helps. Would you, Commissioner Aboli, feel comfortable tabling this or making a motion to move this forward? Or deny?
I would rather make a motion. I did, like I said, I was able to go through them. And it is a, number one, pretty quick read, and all very similar information that's in here. The packet that was given to us is all in support of this. You know, a lot of them just say, I love food, I love Elgin. There's little things that I don't think I would be in support of tabling it. I would be in support of making a motion with conditions, extra conditions.
Commissioner Jones, same question. It's okay if you feel differently. It's part of the process.
Yeah, I feel, well, I have shared with staff, first of all, an application that is so closely associated with a fellow commissioner makes my stomach feel unsettled. I, he has recused himself, it is spouses, but it does just not feel great to me. I've never had a fellow commissioner come and have an application. So I will say, that was commented on, and I have shared concerns that I don't feel really good about it. And then I have also heard, you know, I'm located right there too. And I've heard different things from different people that caused some concern and hesitation. So I'm kind of torn all the way around. It sounds like, and it has felt like we're passing a text amendment to accommodate an applicant a little bit on our agenda today. And, you know, so I have all kinds of, that's just my own personal feelings. And, you know, so, so I have all kinds of, that's just my own personal feelings, I love the food park concept, I love, I, I think that would be a great addition in downtown. I wish that they had the parking lot up at the top of the hill, because it has huge visibility, easy self, you know? I went over there to eat, because they're open, and, again, I'm an insurance agent, so I'm evaluating risk all the time, and I'm standing there with my business partner, and we're both like, holy wow, if there was kids out here, if the, it was, it didn't feel safe, you know? And I'm glad that they're open and doing that, so you can get that, so you can see how, how it goes. So I'm torn all the way around on this whole applicant, so I'll just sit quietly and listen for the rest of it.
Commissioner Valdez.
I do feel that we need to add extra conditions, like you stated. Then I'm willing to move forward with the motion.
So I was willing to add the additional conditions, help staff find out what that direction was for the additional information, and then Commissioner Jones actually kind of swayed me on that. Being that we do have a commissioner related to this petition, I think we need to be a little more careful. So I would actually, with that idea, support this being tabled, but we need to make sure in the month until we come back to the date certain, August, I'm not sure what that is, make it clear to the petitioner what we would be looking for. Yes, with that, the chair will entertain a motion.
I motion to table petition 1525 until we can gather some more information. I'm not sure how I, what's the proper way to make that motion, that it's tabled?
If you'll give me one second, we need to, you're essentially continue, your motion is to table and continue.
Continue.
Public hearing to a date and time certain, so if you'll give me one moment.
And hopefully that would be next month.
Should be August 4th.
You'll make that part of your.
Oh, I have to make that.
It, it has to be date certain.
Okay.
And time, so that persons who have availed themselves of the public hearing have that notice.
We also had quite a few leave, these meetings.
Right, August, August 4th at 7:00.
Okay, I motion that we table item 15-25 to obtain more information and summarize some additional guidelines that we might like to see added onto the spot, and that that comes back to us on August 4th.
At 7:00 p.m.
At 7:00 p.m., 2025.
Thank you, there's a motion, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Staff, please call the roll.
So we have a motion to continue the case or table it until date certain, that date being next Planning and Zoning Commission meeting on August 4th at 7:00 p.m. Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Valdez?
Yes.
Commissioner Abwali?
No.
Chairman Cox?
Yes.
The motion's approved, three, two, one.
All right, that's, that's our, our position, I guess, at this point in time. So we'll have, look forward to additional information coming in, in a month. Appreciate everyone hanging with us so far, next item on the.
Once I get, let me get your other commissioner.
Well, the air handlers shut off at 11:00 again, so I know we had that last month as well, when it starts getting.
I didn't know that.
Stagnant, yeah, you can hear that, the background hiss goes away, I'm sure our AV team notices it. If, if we have, there is an opportunity for public comment coming up, not related to the petition, so we would certainly love to hear from you then, if you're, if you're still here. All right. Thank you, Mr. Mylot. Moving on to item G, other business, are there was, is there business of this commission not related to petitions that we can bring up? I'm looking to my left, not at you, Commissioner Jones, or Commissioner Abwali, anything? Commissioner Jones?
Sometime in the future, I'd like to hear about live workspaces in the downtown, like work with a retail space up front and live in the back, or live on, you know, like we have now, a second floor, but combination, maybe first floor. We do have precedent, our art space has first-floor residents, I believe the tower has first-floor residents, so like modifying that. I, I would be curious to hear how that might look.
Okay.
Thank you.
Commissioner Valdez?
None.
Commissioner Echeverria?
No.
No, the business, all right. Item H, public comment, if any of you in the audience want to make a public comment, not related to any of the petitions heard tonight, now is your opportunity. Come on up. I'm sorry, couldn't hear you. Not related to petitions, just public comment in general, yes. But related to the duties of this commission, I should clarify that. Yes, ma'am?
I just had a question relating to what would be going on on August 4th. My question was specifically, if I were to talk to the other residents in my, in art space, art lofts, and get them, like, in writing and stuff, is that something I could bring to you guys for the next meeting?
You always submit that to, to city, city staff, that the planners represented here and the community development is, is your, your go-to.
Okay, I'm sorry, the plant, who do I talk to?
Those two over there.
Okay. And your names, I'm sorry.
He's got, he's got a business card he'll give you.
Awesome. All right, thank you.
Anyone else? All right, summary, pending development applications.
Let's see, so at the City Council meeting this Wednesday, we have the Sports Dome at 909 South McLean, it's up for consideration. I think I mentioned la, well, the item that was at the last Planning and Zoning Commission meeting in June, which is the, the temple over on Villa Street, or I should say, at 890 Gulf Boulevard, that application will not be moved on to City Council, the applicant has indicated they are making, trying to make some changes to the plans before they move up to the City Council, so that's just for more information.
When they don't come back to us, when they're making changes?
Unless they make changes that are substantial in nature, or become more, the, the application becomes, yeah, exactly. So, so that's unlikely to happen, they're, they're more likely to reduce the impact that are about, reduce the number of units, increase the setbacks, et cetera, as sort of a way of mitigating some of the neighborhood concerns that they've heard, so, but we'll see, we, we don't really know what they are planning to do, but we anticipate to find out soon, so we'll see.
The height of the building, I think, was also, it seemed like a concern as well.
Yeah.
So you said they're not on the schedule right now, right?
They're sort of pending City Council consideration, once they provide additional documentation. I think that's probably it in terms of updates on the existing applications, there's been a, just a whole slew of new applications that came in, some of them smaller than others, but we'll try to get them through as, as quickly as we can. If there's any questions, I'm happy to answer.
Commissioner Echeverria?
No questions.
Commissioner Valdez?
No questions.
Commissioner Jones?
No questions.
Commissioner Abwali?
No questions.
All right, I don't have any questions. Item J, adjournments, is there a motion?
I move to adjourn.
Second?
I'll second it.
Staff, please call the roll.
Commissioner Abwali?
Yes.
Commissioner Valdez?
Yes.
Commissioner Echeverria?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
And Chairman Cox?
Yes.
Motion is approved, five to zero.
Thank you, see you in August.